Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this committee of the whole meeting for Friday, April the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. TNRD acknowledges that we connect with many First Nation communities across our vast regional district, and today we are located on the Tecumlupe to Shakwetmec territory, situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Shakwetmec Nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership we have with Tecumlupe to Shakwetmec and respect the territory and land on which we gather today. We do have the minutes of the February sixteenth committee of the whole meeting. Director Sarai, seconded by Vice Chair Smith, are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And gentlemen online, we need your verbal acknowledgement. Thank you. Anyone opposed? That is carried. We move on to our first delegation presentation of the day, and this is from the fine folks at the Nutsford Community Response Society I have here that we have members Gordon Peterson, who is president, and Terry Jessup, Vice President and Chief of Nutsford Initial Response Team. Gentlemen, the floor is yours and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, we're here on behalf of the Nutsford Community Response Society. And all of you will remember the summer we went through this past year with the Rossmore Lake Fire. It lasted for seven weeks. We had a tremendous community response, and one of the things that characterized what happened would be the cooperation that came to be, and it got better as time went on, with our community, with the TNRD, and with the B.C. Wildfire Service. We had to make a choice. Should we carry on? How should we go forward into the future? Because as it looks like right now, this could happen again. And so we decided to apply for and create a society under the B.C. Societies Act to provide organizational support to what we're calling our response team. And our response team, Terry is going to be speaking about that. And so he's going to give a very short presentation about what are what we're all about, what our response team is. And then let's throw it open for for discussion and some questions and comments that you might have. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you. Like Gord said, my name is Terry Jessup. I'm the Vice President of the Society and Chief of the Nutsford Initial Response Team. I'm going to take a forty-five minute presentation and squish it into about seven and a half. So fasten your seatbelts. Here we go. So our society basically start our journey started in two thousand and twenty-one. There's a lot of arson fires in the area. Somebody was running around mostly at night, lighting fires. Their community banded together. You see a bunch of guys in trucks with tanks, hoses, shovels, axes, whatever they could find. And we're putting out the fires. Wasn't exactly the safest thing to do. It was in the dark. Everybody was scrambling all over place. There's no accountability or anything like that. Then on the first of July, lightning storm went through, and you guys can all remember the fire up in Juniper. Well, Nutsford suffered the effects of that because there was an evacuation order and alerts for everybody on the east side of Highway five A. We held a town hall meeting as a result of the arson and the fires. About one hundred and fifty people showed up. It was during that meeting that we decided that we needed to have some training and some organization. So some forward-thinking members of the community, as well as the Roseville Farmers Institute organized the S one hundred and S one eighty-five training, and we banded together and about out of all of that, out of that hundred and fifty, about twenty-five people attended that training. Also, further to that, we started up a community watch program. We had people driving around at night looking for fires and suspicious vehicles and reporting them. But how did we do it? First thing and foremost, and it still stands this way, every first call goes to Fire Center Star fifty-five fifty-five. We are not middle people. We don't take phone calls. CFR, you call them. We never dispatched. We had a telephone app that went out with information and attendance was strictly volunteer. Worked alongside Wildfire and KFR when they did attend. And once Wildfire got there, it was their show. We were under their leadership, and we did what we could to help them. And that developed a trust with management, wildfire management. It wasn't cheap, though. So we had a few GoFundMe donations. Private donations came in. S one eighty-five, one hundred and one hundred training was about forty-five hundred dollars for for all of us, and each of the Pulaskis and the water backpacks, about three hundred dollars a set. Everything else was provided by the individuals, and we're all into it for about a thousand dollars each, plus the truck. What trucks? Our redneck fire trucks. Okay, they come in all shapes and sizes, and so do we, as you can see. Anyway, two thousand and twenty-two wasn't all that active. It was kind of rainy, but twenty-three wasn't so rainy. During that year, we kept the momentum going. There's still folks really interested in forming a society. Education position was offered to me, and so I took it, and I started setting up more training and recertification. Not once through that that period of time did anybody lose focus on forming a society. And thank goodness, because on July twenty-first, Squido Creek Fire took off. I went to that. And then the Rossmore Lake Fire, as well as Stump Lake Fire, three fires, and one day all resulted lightning. So at the Squidle Creek Fire, I worked alongside the initial attack crew. And my job with them was basically resource allocation and procurement. So within an hour and a half, I had two five thousand gallon tankers of water showing up because they were rapidly running out of water. And all that we needed was a little bit of sand. We could have had ourselves a beach party. But anyway, so we cooperated with all the roadblocks during the Rossmore Fire. Thank you very much, TNRD directors for facilitating that so that we could actually get in there and start to work. One of our guys campaigned Wildfire and got us on as a stat hire. What is a stat hire? We become employees of Wildfire. We do what they say, go where they do. There's no and there's no freelancing. We're under their direction. It's definitely a process because there are some challenges involved. It was obvious that we're given menial tasks, but hey, so what? Job's got to get done. There is no current work without supervision. Kurt, Nutsford Initial Response Team, without senior supervision. Well, we've got that structure, so we were able to do it. Had to sign in, sign out daily, like everybody else. We're left on our own like everybody else. The problem was, one of the biggest problems that we had to get used to was the staff rotation. They're fourteen in, two out, I believe, and that changed management. And we actually ended up getting stood down. And that was okay, you know, with Doug Hotten. We actually got back in there. Communications, there isn't any cell service out there, as you guys are very well aware of. So we didn't know how many guys were going to show up because it's all strictly volunteer and very disorganized from that respect, but, you know, six to eight people, but mostly three to five. Again, no cell service, inconsistent radio contact with the TFL Task Force Leader. Some of the B.C. Wildfire Service managers were very supportive, and some were hesitant. Hey, it's out of the box. They hadn't been done in a long time. I get it. And some of the community members resented us. Where did these guys come from, right? What are our strengths? We were very good with logistics. We had we were able to get water, drinking water in, tankers in, food for us. We're probably the only fire crew out there that put on weight during the fire. But anyway, so leaders within our team were quickly identified. It was great, and the teamwork and that is all carried forth into now as we're building our team and more. That's the one eighty-two crew, and I won't tell you how. Okay, I will tell you how we got our name. That's our combined ages. But then we became accepted. You know, why? Because we're out there every day. We're very structured. We have strong leadership. We have a very strong crew with great work ethic, and we cooperated. Big word, cooperate. With wildfire. We're professional. We're approachable. And we had local knowledge with local ways to ways to get local assets in there and help. That's huge. That's that's really, really huge. We also know how to get in there. These guys are putting on a lot of unnecessary miles, especially after the the meetings in the morning, and we're able to show them shortcuts that were safe. And, you know, so eventually we're given some leadership positions. We worked very well with the Costa Ricans and Iverson's, the contract crew from Duncan, worked very well with South Africans. And the Australians loved us. That's the little the guy in there with the green jacket. That's that's the one of the Australians, and that's the South African crew. So what do we do now? September fifteenth, we're stood down. Fire is contained. Okay, but the work's not done. We went to spot fires as we're needed. Greenberg Task Force has struck. There's a Resiliency Recovery workshops. We got feedback from some very influential people, and we took we took them at their word, and we moved forward with it. We've built relationships with you, B.C. Wildfire, folks like Mike Simpson. We haven't stopped, but first what we need to do, like Gord said, register the society. We did that in December. We're communicating with the communicating with the community. We got buy-in from the community. We're looking for donations, so please feel free to write a check if you're so inclined. And, you know, like relationships, still fundraising, charity status. We're working on the not-for-profit status. We have ongoing training, and I'll show you what we're going to be doing with that. We have plans. We home base right now. We're in a in a Lent to us house, and that could be taken away at any time. So if you guys have any ideas where we could set up, I'm free to free to ideas. Recruiting, we're now up to thirteen crew members. Our training is ongoing as we speak. Some of the some of the stuff that we're working on isn't required by Wildfire, but we're doing it anyway because it's in the best interest of the community and the team. Logistics, we have a mechanic. We have communications, field and community communications. We do have our own cell service. It's Wi-Fi in a box. And we can actually get food and water to our crews, you know, and fuel, everything, everything that we need, we can we can get because we're local. We've established a bit of a response area, so and it's it's not written in stone. We know how to contact the team. Wildfire will be given our contact information. We were working on a team call-out system similar to what we used in twenty-one. We're going to do lightning watch with a duty roster. Our radio communications, we have we have that taken care of, and then, like I said, cell phone coverage is ready for us. So here we are, the Nutsford Initial Response Team. Three years later, it's been a three-year journey, and I thank you very much for the support that you've given us so far, and I look forward to more and working very closely with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. So while all of this is going on, this is the stuff that really, really matters. We say our society exists to provide organizational support for the response team. That's that's why we exist. But having said that, there's a fair bit of work in getting a society up and running. And so that's kind of my part of the deal, so we won't bore you with all that, but there's any of you who've ever been involved in that, you probably know there's quite a bit involved. So let's throw it open for discussion. Did you want to look after that, then, Madam Chairman?
I certainly will. Thank you very much. I will make sure that I keep track of all these rascals and who's put their hand up in what order. I'm sure there'll be some questions, but first, thank you very much for coming and presenting. Awesome job condensing forty-five minutes into that. Thank you so much. Good overview. I just wanted to ask, you mentioned resentment from locals, and I just wondered if you could elaborate on that for a minute.
Basically, what it came down to was there's people that wanted to be on the team and people that did not want to be on the team. We fell into the direction of wildfire, so we had some very tight safety parameters in which we had to do that. There is people that did take the one hundred and one eighty-five training when it was offered by the community. And there was people that did not. It was those people that didn't take the training that were actually kind of resentful of us the way that we were doing things, and they felt that, oh, I'm sorry. So those people were resentful that we were doing things the way we were because they thought it was overkill, and they, you know, I've been fighting for it since, you know, as a little baby or whatever. But we had to withdraw from from those from those incidents and in the interest of safety. So it did cause a little bit of a ruffle, and it took quite some time for them to actually realize that it's probably easier to work with us than 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 not, because we actually could get wildfire resources in and whatnot to help out. So in the end, it worked out. We do have buy-in now from the community. But again, it was, you know, I mentioned it's out of the box thinking for for wildfire. It was all a box thinking for some of our community members as well.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Director Thorpe? All right, go ahead.
I have I direct your area of I, so I've got a lot of little kind of communities that are in a similar situation. Would you be willing to share your contact information so that perhaps some of my leads in those little communities could reach out to you? Best practices?
Yeah, no, this is this is one of the hopeful outcomes of today's session, and thank you again for allowing us to be here. And that is that what we have learned, we're we're willing to share that with others. We were invited up to Chase for for a meeting, and that had people from both east east side of the TNRD and the west side of the Columbia Shoe Shop, and we had a community meeting there. And so I'm sure we could work out work out something if if you contacted us and made arrangements to.
Okay, so how do I contact you?
Well, I think I think you have our contact information, Scott, yeah.
Chair Roden, if I could, I think the presentation we could share with the board, and then in that presentation, we could actually add the contact information. If that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Director Sarai, then Getz, then Grenier.
Thank you so much for that presentation. And Emir, a lot of the comments that we heard for the last two years from the Shoe Shop area in Monte Lake, the fires, that local knowledge is so important, especially when you say, you know, you know, the shortcuts, you know, the the type of weather that comes in and where it comes in and 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 what have you. I'm going to be a little bit selfish. Rossmore Lake is one of my favorite fishing spots, and over the last little while, the social media, we're really concerned about historical cabins that were there, and some people said that they're gone. Some people have said they're still there. Can you confirm if they're still there?
You know.
I know a really good fishing spot on that lake, if you want to share yours.
I'll share the spot, but not what I use to fish.
Okay, that's I'll figure it out from there. So if you're referring to the military cabins, yeah, I was up there fishing when it opened up, and they looked to be intact.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Getz.
Thank you for the presentation and the foresight that you have. I was just wondering, how long does the one hundred and the one eighty-five training take for someone from start to finish? I'm just curious.
It's a two-day course. The one hundred and one eighty-five are combined. So the one hundred is basic wildfire suppression, and the one eighty-five is entropin avoidance and safety. So that's covered on the first day, and then the second day is is out in the field for practical. We put it all together. At least that's the way our in-house instructor is doing it, Terry Doy, and he's one of the wildfire certified or recognized instructors. That's the way he structures his program.
Thank you, Director Grenier.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation and protecting areas L and J, and just like Trish and Mike were talking about, I'd really be curious about the 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 training. You guys initiated this training under some pretty severe circumstances, and I'd love to be able to take that that information back to our people in Cherry Creek and in the Tronkio Valley area because they've expressed an interest, but how do you go about it? If you could give us a little bit more background on your experience. Thank you.
So so Kerry's going to answer the question, but before he does, we initiated it, and then Kerry has kept it going. And so there's training going on on right now, and so.
To answer your question, yeah, the training is ongoing, and we've taken foresight and the lead. We want to stay ahead of the curve. So when when wildfire or anybody comes to us to say, you need to have this training in place, we want to be able to say, we've got it already, and we're moving forward. And even we're thinking about, you know, on one some of the literature we received that first aid is not required, but it's recommended. We've already established that, and we're taking it as well. Again, we want to stay ahead of the curve because, you know, we may be out there for a period of time on our own. So how do how do folks go about doing it? I think probably the best best thing is is establish a need, which you've already done. Find a group of people that want to take it and run, and then aren't going to get tired of running, and grab a hold of it and go. I'm more than willing to come out and help you with that and do a presentation like Gord was saying that we did out in in Chase. The biggest thing, and Kevin Skrapnik gave gave us the advice back in October, and we're again ahead of the curve. Form a society. That's the biggest thing. You need that structure. You need the guidance. You need the direction. You have to have within the group, you have to have visible leadership and and people that can actually they don't necessarily have to have wildfire experience, but they have to have organizational skills. They have to have leadership skills and supervisory skills and able to make a decision in the heat of the moment.
So did was it working with Kevin Skrapnik, and he brought in an instructor, or how how? Who did the instructing, and how did how would somebody go about contacting people to do that?
So in in two thousand and twenty-one, we decided we we felt the urge and the need in twenty-one to start the training. And so there's about twenty-five of us that did the training. Out of that twenty-five, there's three of us that stuck around. And and so we we rigged up our trucks ourselves, and and then in last summer, there was again still three of us that were out there doing it. There was a lot of other folks that were out there, too. And then we we banded together and became more formalized. And then we held, let me think, I'm just thinking back here on timeline wise. Then there was the the stat hire, and they made it crystal clear that you had to have the one hundred and the one eighty-five training intact. So one hundred is a recertifiable course. One eighty-five, you don't have to. And again, thinking ahead of the curve here, we are recertifying one eighty-five every year. That's mandatory on the team. And so anyway, those folks that had the one hundred and one eighty-five courses through whatever paths they chose in life were brought on Stat Heart, and they worked under under wildfire on the team. We've held on to a few of those folks as we move forward into into the winter. And now we're moving forward again. So who did the instruction? The first instruction was done by Doug Richardson in two thousand and twenty-one. And then the last three courses that we've held, the first two in the summer of last summer, were done by Terry Doy. And we did another one last month with Terry Doy, and we have another one planned for May fifteen, sixteen with Terry as well. So you just need to, my recommendation would be go on the list of approved wildfire instructors and contact them to see if they can do the training for you.
Director Stamer?
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. Thanks very much for your presentation, Terry. How confident are you that the B.C. Wildfire Service will be improving on their initial attack and response to a fire with their resources, including aerial support? How confident are you that they'll be able to work with B.C. Wildfire Service through this process?
I'm very confident. That that was established actually through last summer. Like I said, we had there is one management team that came in that that stood us down, and I can only hypothesize that it was because they're going, what the heck is this? What has happened on my days off? Shortly thereafter, the weather changed, and the wind came up, and the fire broke loose again, and and through the efforts of Doug Hotten, we were able to get back on the line and get back to work. Through that process, we developed the relationship and the trust with wildfire management. Hugh Murdock, I was had a phone conversation with him the other day with regards to our response process. The literature that I've received and the process that we're taking now is is that we're to provide contact information. They say one contact person. And if something comes up, they will call us, and it's all part of the Cooperative Community Response Program, which we are a recognized community within that program. And so the process is going to be wildfire will contact us, and out we go. With our lightning watch, what we're going to be doing is is we'll be watching the storm come. We'll look at the weather forecast, pull out our lightning apps, and take a look, and we'll get Latin long on that, and we'll send a crew out, not right away, but, you know, a short time later. And we'll contact the the landowner if it's on if it's on ranch land or whatever. If it's on Crown, we'll go ahead anyway. And we're going to we're going to look for fire activity. If we see fire activity, then we're going to scramble around trying to get cell service, and we're going to call Fire Center and confirm that we have fire activity. And would they like us to action it? And we also need an initial attack team to come out and take the lead, or at least say, yeah, you guys did a good job containing it, and they will confirm that it's out, not us. That's their job, not mine. And so we want to work cooperatively with them. As far as air attack goes, we have communication. Our radios have the ability to talk with Helco and use the the air channel. I can't remember which color it is, gold, silver, bronze, whatever. But so we do have that capability as well. So we'll be able to do it. But again, everything, when it when it gets that big, it's likely going to be under wildfire, and we'll be working for them under their leadership.
Thanks for that.
Director Middleton?
Thank you. I just did sort of a quick little Google search here and came up with an article back from two thousand and twenty-one that speaks to the Nutsford Volunteer Fire Brigade. Now, is that the start of what has turned into your organization today? So is that just sort of a flow-through, and it's being renamed and just is it the same group?
Yes, and I'll let Terry elaborate.
Yes, yes, that's how it all started, and and what we really want to stay away from was fire brigade, volunteer fire department, anything that implied structural. We do not do structure, period. And so we didn't want to give the community or anybody else that that idea that we were able to do that. We're strictly strictly wildfire, strict anything that has to do with structure, we're we're not going to do it. So we changed it. And also, too, the Nutsford Initial Response Team is reflective of the fact that we don't want to get pigeonholed to wildfire wildfire. Like if there's flooding, if there's something that comes along, we take a look at that Bill thirty-one, and it talks about all the potentials in community response. And we want to be able to to help out with anything that might fall under that, or you can imagine anything else. So so we didn't want to get pigeonholed into wildfire.
Director Morris?
Thank you through through the chair. Nice to see all of you here and obviously have been and still are a very capable group of people and mobilizing in difficult situations. My question relates to you. You have created a society, and my question actually relates to liability and coverage for your volunteers. I'm curious if you had any significant challenges and have any recommendations for us, because there are many others that are looking at forming a society for those reasons. Thank you.
We we have been meeting with an insurance agent on the on, and so there's kind of two levels of insurance. One is fairly straightforward. The other is not. And the straightforward one is getting director's insurance, which any society would do for its directors. Where it gets more complicated is on the question of liability. And so the discussion that we had with the insurance agent, and she's looking into getting a quote, is the importance of the recognition that when we are active in responding to a fire, an emergency situation, we're working under the guidance of B.C. Wildfire Services. We're not freelancing. And so as soon as as and and that's why this cooperative approach, we we probably are going to have to take it a little bit further in terms of having some sort of a more formal understanding that if we're engaged with them, then we're in support of them rather than us doing it on our own, and that would reduce dramatically the liability that would be come to us. We're we're going to have to refer this, though, to not only an insurance agent, but but get some legal advice as well so that we're not putting ourselves into unwitting jeopardy. So do you want to add to that, Terry?
One of the questions that came up in the frequently asked questions, literature had to do with with that. And once once we were tasked by wildfire, we are not we now fall under their employment and their guidance and their supervision and direction. With Gord's, what we're thinking about and what we're concerned about is, for example, we go and we see fire before before actually get get actioned by wildfire to do it. And some of the big concerns we have were would, you know, right off the top of my head, we had cuts, cut some fence to get into it, and there just happens to be a couple hundred head of cattle in there that we're not aware of in the dark, and these cattle get out on the highway. What are we going to do? So it the importance of it would be communication with wildfire. And then the next one is like Gord says, we are actively seeking insurance for liability. And like he says, the biggest one is are we or are we not going to be under the guidance of wildfire? And then the next one is, the big question is, structure, and that's a flat out no.
Thank you, C.A.O. Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Roden. I just wanted to compliment the group on the presentation. This was the exact outcome the task force was looking for when the recommendation came forward with working with societies is is this model. So in collaboration with Kevin and REOC in this group, that was some of the recommendations I was able to take forward to this group and help the the larger task force understand because we've got ten electoral areas. If we had five of these groups, and every one of them, we'd be much better off. And so I've had many conversations with the directors about all these topics we're talking about, and I think this presentation really pulls all that together. There's some work I think the TNRD needs to do. We need to work with B.C. Wildfire as well on. Uh, we need to work with B C Wildfire as well on how how we could potentially fund, but I I'm glad that Terry mentioned the structural part. This is not about any structures whatsoever and that's been our issues in the past where and that's where our policy and our legal opinions have come in, where we cannot fund uh these types of groups when it has to do with structural, but we need to shift that now to how we're gonna deal with this with interface fires. So this is um something that I'd like to talk about later in the agenda about. Um, and but I just wanted to commend these folks on some great work and I think this would be the exact model that we need to duplicate forty nine times over and try to get fifty of these in the T N R D.
Director Hotten?
I'd just like to thank Gordon, Terry and the group for doing what you did last year. Um the community was very honored and proud that uh you got out in all four corners. And I'm very glad that you formed a society, took the leadership. And uh I just want to say on behalf of the T N R D, it was great working with you. Thank you.
And in response to that, uh we uh we also really appreciate the the cooperation and support that we've had uh from from you, Doug and Scott. And uh the the ideal that we're working towards that this cooper, this cooperative, community cooperative uh response, uh it's going to take some work to uh for the, because there's basically three parties. There's uh, there's the uh B C Wildfire Service, there's the regional district as the local government. And then there's the societies like ours and ideally uh a lot of the issues that are going to potentially come up can be anticipated and can be uh written down in terms of kind of protocols for communication and who calls who and who's going to be responsible for what. That can be anticipated beforehand rather than having to kind of react on the run. So we're hoping that it will evolve to that and uh so that's an area that we have more, more work to do.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Director Lepso?
Yeah, uh, thank you very much. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you guys for when you came to the Village of Chase in Chiquetmatulu the other day. Just most professional, like your presentation, very professional. Uh, couple of comments I liked your general. When there's a discussion going on in a coffee shop, I liked your general ideas that start us from a coffee shop and then you have your town hall. You have a hundred and fifty people show up. When it comes into action, you're down to twenty five. When it actually comes to actually implementing it, you're down to five, which is, we all know as directors is any subject that comes up. I thought was great. Uh, funding, thanks the C E O for bringing that up because I was gonna, I was gonna mention that too. Uh, you did a full forty five minute presentation. I think that was videoed in Chase as well. And if that's available, it, I'd recommend people looking at the the full presentation because it was just brilliant. The last part, do you, do you mind uh extrapolating on the geek? Part of your presentation, because that's the part I found the most interesting when you talked about how the geeks helped you out.
Sorry, you're with extrapolating on what point, sorry?
Well, when you mentioned it wasn't just the hardworking guys pulling hoses and everything, it was actually the technological, maybe the smaller person that actually went around and and did the online stuff and the mapping and
Right, yeah, that's actually a very, very good point. And that's where the local knowledge comes in. And so there's programs out there and we actually have people, like you say, that are, that aren't on the, like, out on the ground. Uh, they're working with community uh communications, they're getting daily information out to people, they're checking on residents and whatnot, make sure everybody's okay. But also too, with the mapping aspect of it, and there's, I, it's G I S mapping and I think you guys are working on it with um with one of our members as well or somebody from from the board here is working on it, but um that's very, very instrumental because the maps that were provided to us by wildfire um don't have structures. They, they're very difficult to see roads and they certainly don't have logging roads and trails on them. So we did the best that we could with with the T F L and we're starting to draw lines and maps and where houses were and whatnot and better accesses and whatnot that that were actually being used. So it's not just boots on the ground that that make the difference. It's the other, other people, you you know, in the background, they're very supportive logistics, same thing. Food was brought into us every morning, a truckload of food, and I'm not kidding you, we put on weight, okay? And and water, we needed drinking water. Um, so every morning at our, at our safety meeting, you know, a truck would show up and there'd be food and water and snacks and and that sort of thing. And but it's that infrastructure, that community infrastructure that is invaluable and it also too gets the community involved. Everybody in the community is a stakeholder and I think we need to understand that. And this is what what we're talking about at the society level too, is that everybody can can contribute. Mechanics, communications, logistics, that sort of thing, right? Um, and and equipment operators and and uh folks that own um large, large trucks that have tanks on them. We don't care if you can drink the water. And we can bring that in by the bottle, but we need tankers full of water to get to us, right? So the whole community can 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 get involved and I, and this will help, help you out in in the, where is it Cherry Creek you're talking about, right? So get everybody involved. It doesn't matter, you know, how old they are, whatever, somebody has something to offer and it's that resource that we need to to tap into and that's where we're going to get buy-in, that's where we're going to get community support, that's where it just balloons from there. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other?
I just want to add just very briefly to what Terry was on to about the uh the community uh. Uh, I I grew up on a farm in Alberta and I thought I knew what a a type community was about, but when this happened up in Nutsford, it was uh, I've never seen anything like it in terms of how the community pulled together. And this went on for seven weeks. It was every day, day in and day out, people were showing up to do whatever they could to help. And so one of the, one of the comments I made was that uh one of the silver linings in this dark cloud that was over us for that time was that we really got to know our neighbors better. Uh, everybody got to know each other well. Uh, I was, we were where my wife and I live, we were right on, we, we came within a whisker of losing our place. So we were the beneficiaries of uh all of this uh effort and um it, it was fantastic. There were people coming in almost every day saying, how are you guys doing? Everything okay? And uh that was common, that was going on throughout the community. So whatever is done, it's, there's all the kind of the technical response that we've heard about, but there's also the community response. And uh and and nurt- tend to tending to that and and valuing it. So that is one of the things we're trying to do here as we go forward, is we want to make sure we have a very strong response team. And that's happening very nicely, but at the same time, um tend to this, I call it the, the, the goodwill, uh, community goodwill and it's uh, we kind of reached a mountaintop. We don't want to uh see it go into a valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? And we will be getting uh the presentation and the contact information, so I'm sure, you know, reach out if you have any questions. All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Congratulations and here's, hoping you have a very quiet and relaxing and peaceful summer.
Thank you.
All right, we, we out of the fire into the fire, I guess here. So we go into a presentation from B C Wildfire from Kamloops Fire Center member Jeff Dunn, manager and Nicole Bonnet, Communications and Engagement Specialist.
Thank you. Just gonna load up some slides here. So, good morning. Uh, my name is Jeff Dunn. I'm the new Fire Center Manager in the Kamloops Fire Center. We've got Nicole Bonnet, our Community Engagement Specialist, with us here today. And I, I moved down to Kamloops in June from the Caribou Fire Center where I was the business manager prior. So came down in June as a business manager for Kamloops. Spent the summer obviously working with the center, getting to know it, and now I've moved into the the Fire Center Manager role as of about a month ago. And so we're already moving ahead, getting ourselves prepped and planned for for the season ahead and really liking the opportunity to be be here today to speak to everybody and to kind of give a bit of a, a progress update and and listening to the the conversation we just had, just seeing that collaboration across the field. Where we had a big season last year, we've had many big seasons and we're going to continue to have large seasons. These collaboration opportunities are really pivotal in in terms of us being able to be successful as we fight these fires. Uh, walking around our center and our zones over the last few weeks and meeting some of our new recruits and some of the recruits that are returning. That, there's excitement there. People, people, people are ready to go and getting refreshed and getting their training and and getting back into the the good work that they do. They're, they're getting energized, they're getting themselves established and starting to get themselves feeling good about getting back into another season of it. And and it's going to come with its challenges, as I've said. But just wanted to kind of skate over a little bit about where we're at as a province, whereas at as a fire center. And then some of the collaboration opportunities that we have to partner with communities, partner with industry, to partner with First Nations around the the region so that we're better supported for the success of future fire seasons. So kind of looking at a bit of a provincial overview. Going into the, this fire season, we've got six incident management teams ready to go. And we've got thirty unicrews, twenty person unicrews based around the province that are able to be moved to whichever incidents they need to, depending on where the hazard is. We've also got a hundred and thirty uh three person or four person initial attack crews. We've got twelve uh rapid attack, so based out of salmon arm. We've got thirteen crews of paratech based out of P G. And we've got over seven hundred different wildfire teams members that are coming from other ministries that come in and parachute in with their expertise to be able to support us when we need that extra capacity to build out our operational teams, to build out our logistics wings, our planning sections, to look at the land management pieces and really pivotal roles in ensuring that we we transition from fire into recovery and then get prepared again for future seasons. As well as over twelve hundred contractors in the type two firefighting and type three, as well as all these other community groups and local fire departments, structured crews. It's, it's a, it's a large volume of people that we have available to work together in collaboration on all these different fires. A quick, a quick recap of of where we are, what we have. We've got um five zone locations with a zone office in each of those as well as Kamloops Fire Center being the the main fire center for each of those zones. We also have a provincial wildfire center based out of of the Kamloops Airport as well. And that's just another skate over some of our resources just locally. And for this year, we've actually added an extra two initial attack crews out of Vernon Zone, which is going to help the Vernon Zone, but also help create extra capacity across the whole center to be able to look at that hazard and be able to prepare ourselves, move those resources around as needed. What, what isn't represented on this screen right now is, is two other initial attack crews that we've established. And we've kind of been moving through this over the last few years in trials, one with Skeetison and one with Simp, which have their own initial attack crews that integrate into our resourcing, integrate into our prep planning and are able to deploy as one of our initial attack crews in partnership and having that local knowledge, having that local territory to to work within, we were able to resource and and get to these incidents a lot quicker. So that's been a great success and we're looking to grow that over the next few years as well. So as I mentioned a few, few moments ago, other, other local resources that we're really engaged with is the forest industry. Obviously, we, we need that. Heavy equipment is is primary for us in terms of some of our guard construction and all of our response. We engage through all of the private contractors as well as different uh uh community forests and and all those pieces to kind of bring on that heavy equipment and have those experts that know their local landscape to be able to help engage with us and fall within the structure so that we can help deploy and use the best resources available to us. And a number of type two and type three contract crews established around the province that can be moved around as as and when required at fire departments. As we, as we start to look at the interface of all these fires, as these fires are growing closer and closer to communities, we rely on the volunteer fire departments and the paid fire departments to really support us in our response efforts and and again, as I mentioned, the initial indigenous initial response crews, big part play in in what we're doing. And I won't jump into too much detail on this, but as everyone in this room is aware, Premier's Task Force have, have created some kind of roadmaps for us in terms of some of the pieces that we're, we're going to be moving forward in in terms of successes for for future seasons. And it's kind of giving us some pillars to help work forward towards in terms of community engagement. Just listening to the last presentation, great example of that collaborative approach. This isn't just wildfire that's that has to to be out here fighting these fires. It's about us expanding our abilities, collaborating with the local knowledge, collaborating with the local communities and really engaging so that we're all there and available to be able to respond to these pieces. So reading through these and task force recommendations, it sort of empowers us to to start looking at these creative opportunities to to get engaged, to partner, to look at how we can support better when we have, take on these large fire seasons. Go next one. So I will give a little bit of a seasonal update. As everybody is aware, it's uh still very dry out there. We are, we transitioned out of the season with drought. Go to the next slide please. And and we haven't had the snowpack that we, we would have expected over the, over the winter. Things are dry all around the fire center and all around the province. And we do expect to see a fire season, hoping to to see some, some rain in the next few months. But seasonal outlook is, is going to be for for a dry, dry season. So we are getting ourselves prepared and we are doing as much collaboration as we can to ensure that we're doing the preparedness ahead of time and not ha- having it happen on the fire line. And some really great examples, again, with the Nutsford Crew in terms of this pre-planning, it's so important to what we're doing. It, having to work through all the paperwork and documentation on the fire line as well as the training and all the prerequisites to ensure that everybody is safe, becomes quite a challenge. Doing this ahead of time in the months leading up to a fire season allows us those opportunities to train shoulder to shoulder, allows opportunities to see how we're going to work together, explore the options, learn the landscape and then be better ready to respond when we do get these larger incidents. So really wanted to lean into some of the collaboration opportunities that we have. And across the province right now, we are expanding our workforce. And we're looking at partnerships through different First Nation communities and we're exploring First Nation boot camps. We had one in the Chico and then we've had one down in the coast. We've brought communities in to do some and shoulder to shoulder training in terms of how we uh recruit our staff and some of the the fire line knowledge that is needed to be successful and and becoming one of our firefighters. And we're improving our firefighter recruitment. We're, we're really trying to attract more up and coming staff so that we can fill out our crews, build out those crews, add additional capacity and then start to explore options to increase those, those workforces. And yeah, we're, we're also looking at at better ways for our, for our incident management teams to engage with the communities by adding liaison specialists, by coordinating with the Calumens Association to find these local experts in these areas, integrate them into our incident command structure and then better be able to support the ongoing and long-term recovery pieces of these incidents as well. So a few of the options that are available out there and what we're exploring and starting off with the entry level fire suppression contracts and mainly targeted towards First Nation communities where we're starting to build out um additional workforce capacity through a contracted opportunity to be able to engage and work alongside on the fire line. We've also got the initial indigenous initial response contracts that I mentioned earlier as well as a number of First Nation liaison and cultural heritage contracts that are helping to integrate into our um incident command teams to be able to understand what we need to be aware of on the landscape, exactly to the points that were made earlier about learning where those roads are, where those water sources are and really having that primary knowledge for all of our incoming resources to be able to to lean into. And really having that primary knowledge for all of our incoming resources to be able to to lean into. As well as always exploring the equipment rental agreements and partnering with local communities, local private entities To get as as much heavy machinery as we can preorganized so that it's available for our needs as we move into heightened fire activity. And provincially, this is not a great slide for the color, I apologize. And but provincially, we do a number of standing arrangements That are available to move around the province wherever the hazard may be, so things like first aid services. All these critical resources that we need to be able to be on the fire line, so important. Danger tree assessing and falling services, another large contracted opportunity that goes on for provincial procurement. Falling coordinators and danger tree specialists and and things like remote piloted aircraft scanning. Really important for these larger fires, we need to be having These private companies come in, scan, scan the areas and be able to allow us target those hotspots as we move through. And fire camp services, when you look at some of the incidents we've had, we've had upwards of six, seven hundred people Engage in some of the incidents in this area alone, we build the camps out to support those people. Those camps need support themselves, food, waste services, all those pieces become contracted services And become support services so that we're able to do the pieces we need to do. As simple as trying to find lands that we can set up a camp in the first place. Get hydro poles in so that we can run our power, our generators, all the rest of it. All these critical things need to happen and we need those services from local communities to support them. Firefighter health services, mental health, physical health, occupational athlete Program that we have as well as um massage therapists come in and and help support our our staff To ensure that they're not getting the injuries on the fire line. As as well as other things like large uh water moving systems and structural protection crews. So there's there's tons of opportunities out there to get engaged. We need lots of support in that space and these are some of the some of them, the ones that are available.
Uh so hopefully, everybody in this room has seen uh some of the changes that took place as far as wildfire information sharing goes. And starting last May, I believe it was. Um you would have noticed a big change to the public dashboard, which is the map That shows where all of the incidents are happening across the province. And as well as our blog, so that's what you see a screenshot up here on the wall of. When we send out information bulletins around cultural and prescribed fire projects, open burning prohibitions, area restrictions. All of those live in one spot that's referred to as the blog. So you can go and find a record of anything throughout the province or search kind of by like a tag, a hashtag almost For areas that you're interested in. Uh you're also able to sign up for the information bulletin through the Kamloops Fire Center Fire Information Team, which is the team that I'm responsible for. Um and then you'll be able to get those just sent straight to your email. And if you've got your phone out, you can scan the QR code that's on the screen and it'll take you to a place where you can just sign up with your email if you'd like right now. So I'll leave that up for a couple of seconds, just in case anybody wants it if they haven't already been getting these. Yeah, and then this is just a snapshot, so if anybody's had a chance to see And the educational videos and the incident related videos that we're putting out. It started informally in twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty two, it we created an official videographer position that sits out of headquarters. And then last year we had a second, so we do have two people uh making up this team now that travels around the province and is Largely responsible for the filming and editing Um of those videos that you see come out regarding anything sort of wildfire related. Doing our best to get more information out in a number of different accessible ways to people regarding incidents in a timely manner. But then also trying to educate people a little bit better on the how and the why of the things that we do with NBC wildfire. Um if anybody's on X, formerly Twitter, we do have a Twitter account or X account, I guess, that you can follow. And then Facebook is a place that we put up a lot of educational information. We are kind of trending away from posting regular incident related updates on there. So if you're noticing that change and wondering why, it's because when we got our new wildfire news dashboard Last year, we are able to put a lot more information about incidents Up on the webpage and give it its own dedicated page so that we can talk about The number of resources, where the resources are, what the weather is expected to be doing, if we're having any Safety concerns, um the Okanagan would be a really good example of where we Often run into drone incidents where people are flying drones in our restricted airspace, which is really compromising safety. So we'll use those pages to also really highlight Um critical pieces of information that might be impacting response in an area. Before last year, we could only put that information out for fires that were identified as a fire of note. Um so it's really opened that up, which is why you won't find sort of those regular updates Uh just about daily operations on Facebook anymore. Each of those pages also has a phone number so that if there's an incident management team in place, you can see who you can contact to get more information. Or if you don't see the information that you're looking for in regards to that incident, otherwise you're always welcome to call the Kamloops Fire Center. And you'll get either myself or one of my team, it's the phone number right up there, five five four five nine six five. It's a quick plug, this is not a place to report a fire to, we will direct you back to Uh star five 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 or the app to report a fire. But any questions, any concerns, if you're wondering About the how and the why we're doing something or the why we aren't doing something, give us a call and we'll be happy to answer those questions. And the email in this bottom right corner there, the KFC procurement Is if you're interested in signing up equipment or participating in Work with wildfire in some way, shape or form, and you're not sure who your local zone is. You can either reach out to my team or to the procurement email and then they'll help get you in touch with the right person. And then I think the last thing that we'll just, I'll plug before I give the mic back to Jeff is we do have a B C um wildfire service public mobile app. It's got a lot more functionality this year than it did last year, as does the wildfire news page. I will just say though, this is very much a work in progress, this year is its second iteration and while we are working To really improve the amount of information that we can get out to people in a really timely way. It's not perfect, it's not without its bugs and we very much know that. Um but if you can send us, like if you're clicking through things and you find something that's like a broken link Or it's not working the way you think it should, send us an email and let us know. That email needs to be more than like this sucks because this sucks doesn't really help us know what the problem is Or what you don't like about it. But the only way we can make things better to work for everybody is if we get that input back from people as to what's not working about that. Um and then the public mobile app, a new feature for the report a wildfire function for this year, it lets you If you're like out of cell phone service in a remote area, you can still submit a report through the app. And then once you come back into cell phone service, the app will automatically send that report for you. It won't send it when you're outside of cell service, but it won't make you go back into the app to resubmit it once you enter Into cell phone service, which I think is a really big thing for people to be aware of. And then in addition to that When you can submit a picture or if you're talking to people and can encourage them to submit a picture. The picture is geo referenced and it also tells us the direction that you're looking when you took that picture. So if you're not super familiar with the area that you're in, it's really helpful for our operational staff as they're able to make Response decisions. We're working with the information that people provide us and so if you're not really sure where you are or what you're looking at. It's going to make it hard for crews to get out on the ground and locate that fire that you've reported. Thanks.
Thanks Nicole. Yeah, so the the last piece I had for for everybody here was It, our staff, our counterparts, all of our partners, our priority is bringing them home safe every evening. After a hard day's work, there's going to be challenges ahead and it was mentioned in in your presentation. There's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of challenges out there in the fire line. We, our primary focus is our staff safety, bringing everybody home after days of hard work. So we will continue to move in that direction and this is why we want to bring into these collaboration conversations To do this pre-org ahead of time so that we're looking at opportunities And looking at how we can partner and bringing people in as the stat hires, as as mentioned by yourself. And to ensure that it's all under one umbrella so that we all have Command and control and be able to respond to these incidents together. I'll open it up to questions.
Th- thank you very much both for your presentation. I have directors Stamer, Sarai and Sow to start us off and Getz. Alright.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks very much, Jeff, for your presentation and And all the good work that everyone's doing behind the scenes because we certainly don't want to see This summer to be a, or last summer to be a reflection of this summer. Couple of quick ones for you. How proactive is your organization going to be with campfire bans? Uh if we're going to have a a similar dry season like we had last year, are we going to be Are you going to be proactive or are we going to have to come begging for you to be putting campfire bans on?
Yeah, good question. And so we're going to be assessing the science, looking at the hazard, looking at what resources we have. Looking around the province at what other um incidents we have uh at the time and making an informed decision on that, so That 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 is the strategy that we we employ across the Kamloops Fire Center As well as the the province as a whole. So looking at some of the the challenges with 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 staffing resourcing. Also what's happening out there on the landscape and what that spread and what that likelihood of of event is. And and I'm making an informed decision. When when looking to to put on that campfire ban, I'm coordinating with My wildfire officers in each of the zones that are out there looking at what's happening, how things are burning. Doing test burn and really trying to get a good understanding of within their geographic, how things are responding. And then that's how we we bring that data into the the rest of the science and then Build that into our plans for when we 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 go forward to to make recommendations for campfire bans.
Okay, and if I may, on the second one, uh it's refreshing to hear that you're going to be continually to rely on heavy equipment. Uh which has been questionable in the past. Uh how are you on your EAA signups right now? Are you Where you should be with all the logging contractors, all the equipment that's available so that I mean, when we were in the business, by now we were already formulating all the lists, all the equipment that's available throughout the industry. Are we doing it similar to what we used to do in the past?
Yeah, so from each of our zones within Kamloops, and I'll only speak for the Kamloops Fire Center. We have a number of of contractors already on contract or in the process of getting signed up, getting their rates sent out to them. And there's been quite a high level of engagement this year. And it's it's been a a copy and paste process in terms of some of the providers that were last year, it's just a refresher to see what New equipment they have this year, add it to the list and refresh with a new contract. So In terms of our readiness for for the types of of fires we're going to see over the next few weeks, we have ample heavy equipment. And we'll continue to to canvas and and work with the communities to find other opportunities To extend that so that we're not racing to it in the middle of July and August to to get those those um contractors signed up. Cause it it's a two way street. We need the contractors to work with us as well as us reaching out and being proactive to get these pieces signed up and established So that we know what we have to call upon when it comes to these larger seasons.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Director Sarai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that presentation. Just a couple of questions. You can go back a couple of slides. Something caught my eye there where Funding uh for the community groups like Nutsford here said twenty twenty four only. And I'm thinking if if there's, if what I'm hearing and seeing, such a valuable partnership. Um why isn't that funding put into place so it's used year after year that it's built into the budget instead of one off? Is that what I'm seeing there? That they could be looking for more money next year?
Yeah, so we're we're still learning our way through some of these pieces and seeing what this collaboration can look like. So when when it comes to um To the actual training and true to Fraser Basin Council. That contract to establish the initial training opportunities was put out as a one year to kind of start to develop and test what this can look like. But some of the other pieces that we spoke to is is about bringing these staff in under statutory hire, which is under the B C wildfire Or under the wildfire act and that's a hiring process that's ongoing. We're trying to now bring that all together to establish it as a as a full process. And by by putting it as a one year only right now, gives us that opportunity to reflect on it after the first year and see where we're going in the future with this.
But just supplemental, just on that, so and and I'm hearing when they had twenty five people come out and it's six down to two. I'm thinking the training is absolutely invaluable, but when we're putting up more and more red tape You'll get less and less buy in because people are saying, I just want to go help and I I don't want to go through everything else.
Yeah, and I I completely understand that, but from from our point of view, it's it comes down to the safety piece. We we don't want anyone to get injured out there. We we want to ensure that people are aware of of what they're doing and the dangers of this this work. These fires are 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 massive and challenging and we're seeing fire behavior that hasn't been seen before. We want to ensure that everybody that's out on those fire lines is equipped for what they're doing. I'm sure that is going to bring frustration to some people that 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 feel they 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 may have the capabilities. But we want to ensure that they have the capabilities and can work within the process that ensures that they're protected. Not just for that day, but also the the longevity if they do get hurt. True work safe, the compensation if they they have an injury. We want to make sure all of that is together because The initial fire is only one part of this. Someone gets injured, that's a lifelong injury. We want to make sure that they have the ability to be able to tap into those pieces and be supported as they go on with their lives.
Thank you for that answer. Um my second question, um historically, uh when a fire was spotted, it would be hit Very fast and very hard right away. And over the last few years, we've been hearing from residents out in the Shushop area here Is we monitor it and I can understand when there's numerous fires going, we can't, we prioritize them and we do monitor them. But do we have an initial uh fire season starts, do we go in there and hit that fire Fast and hard right away, put it out so we don't have the ability of unforeseen weather pattern come in and take that fire Uh take off, it takes off on us like it has been in the last little while. What is the policy there? Do we just Is there a monitoring system that we do or do we go in and hit it hard, hit it fast right away?
Yeah, so the the strategy is that we we deploy resources That we have available on our prep sheet to the incidents that are that are close. Life and property being number one, and if it's out further out in the bush, we it will have less of a priority At that time until we can find the resources to 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 fill and move into that space. And initial attack is obviously number one for us and we we do Prioritize that and and have the the crews available to 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 take on those responses and and the added capacity that we're adding through these Indigenous initial response crews as well as having somebody other contractor opportunities available to us through industry, heavy equipment. And the people out there in the in the communities that are seeing these fires and reporting them, gives us these opportunities to hit them harder and quicker in the first end.
Yep, thank you, Director. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm, yeah, I just want to add on top of that. And there's a couple other pieces that play into how we respond to fires when they first start And determining where a fire has started and whether or not it's in like a B C parks area, there are Fire management plans that kind of dictate what response can happen where. And sometimes fires are, areas are classified as areas where you'll Let it burn until it reaches potentially like a certain trigger point or a certain line where some version of response then becomes acceptable. But B C wildfire service isn't a land manager in that capacity, so we do have to work with All of the land managers throughout the province and the plans that they have in place for The values that might be within the area that a fire has started.
And just on that, I think that would be valuable information to share with the residents because that's not, like you shared it now, that makes a lot of sense. Most people don't uh aren't aware of that information.
Thank you, Director Sow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and uh thank you for the presentation. Regarding the heavy equipment, um I'm very glad to hear that, you know, you you mentioned uh In the Kamloops Fire Center anyways, currently there is already a lot of um fleet operator or owner operators uh signed up. I'm just sharing uh some feedback that I've had when I met with a community in the um Uh North Pomsen here. Um some of the equipment fleet owners Are staying, some of the uh challenges they face when they uh negotiate with the 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 contracts Is that um the the blocks of times that are contracted for is too short. Um one example was given is Uh B C wildfires uh could not find uh water tenders um for being on standby. And it's not the fact that there is no equipment available, it's because um For example, um to get into some of these remote areas, the traditional on highway um water tenders are not suitable. So they use rock trucks and they the traditional on-highway water tenders are not suitable, so they use rock trucks and they put a 3,000 gallon tank in the back and that process takes half a day. And then to take on and then take off again. So that's almost a day just to re-outfit it. And their feedback was I was I was told, um, you know, BC wildfire contract, we just want you for the weekend for two days. So it's 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 hard for them to to do that. And I'm wondering how negotiable the BC wildfires, do they get feedback from the owner and say, hey, I I can't do it for two days, but I can do it for five. Can you offer me a contract for five? Does BC wildfire negotiate or saying, no, you can't work for two days, then it's not. Thank you.
So really good points. And so all of our heavy equipment is done on hourly rates. There's there's posted hourly rates so that anyone that can meet the requirements of of having the work the worksafe pieces, the insurances and the registered business can look at the posted rates online and know what they're being paid for the classification machinery that they have. When we go to put pieces on standby, we're 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 going down to our list of contractors and our established list of what they have available and we're calling accordingly. So if we need water, water being brought up the hill and we're we're needing something that's a bit more robust than just a road running one, we will call that company that has that identified. If we need a dozer, if we need an excavator, we're going down and looking at that and seeing which ones and then we'll put them on standby or we'll put them on deployed as required and it's done on an hourly rate. When we put them on for a standby period, there's a reduced hourly rate that's put on to as a standby for a readiness piece. But to to your example, we if if we put something on standby, we need to be able to send it 20 minutes later, 30 minutes later. We don't want to have to wait half a day for that water truck to be developed. We needed to be able to go straight away. So that's a conversation that that contractor can have with the with the zone and see what the the limitations to getting that put on would be. And then we can look at what that standby rate may look like from there. But again, we 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 don't unfortunately have the time sometimes to to be able to negotiate with every single person. And that's why we went for these blanket rates so that it's open for any operator that has this equipment. And they know exactly what rates they're getting for that.
Director Getz.
Thank you for your presentation. I have two questions. The first one's for Nicole. Being an ESS volunteer, my wife and I, we work ESS. I've been for a number of years, about 10 years with the 2021 fire and last year's West Kelowna fire. One of the things that we've always asked for is because we re-up these people every three days with because we we are now lodging them in our community, we are never able to get any kind of a a breakdown of what the fire is, where it's being fought, et cetera. And these people just want to know what's happening in their area. And we are never able to get that information to pass it on. And they feel because we're representing ESS and we're the first point of contact for them, that that information should be coming to us so we can at least display it on EV screen. And we've never been able to get that. And it is a frustration point. Uh, I'm not asking you to fix that today. I'm just letting you know what we see over the last number of years. And I guess my question would be is if there would be a, like, we have an EPC in our area now, Emergency Project Coordinator, whether he could be looped in every morning on discussions on where the firefighting is and what's happening for the people that have been evacuated. It's very frustrating for them and they just want to know what's happening. And we're not able to ever give them that information. And then we kind of catch flak for it. So again, I don't expect you to fix that this morning. It's just letting you know what comes across when we have an emergency.
Um, I guess what I will offer is that through the wildfire news dashboard, I think this was a hiccup that we ran into last year is it's not just like a one-click, easy access thing for people. But if you went onto the wildfire news dashboard and you clicked on a little like incident icon, the little circle, it'll give you a pop-up box and that pop-up box is like McDougal Creek wildfire, um, initial like date of report, the date, the like size of the fire, and then I think the status. And then there was a box that said full incident details. It was just a little blue one. A lot of people thought that pop-up box was the full incident details and didn't realize that if they clicked the words full incident details, it would take them to a page. And that page is dedicated to the incident. It gets updated every morning. And if something significant were to happen either throughout the day or overnight, it would be updated then too. But there's an overview tab, there's an objectives tab, there's a maps and photos tab, like all of that information is available to anybody who wants it. And they can get it through the app and also get it from the website. And if you're getting it on the website, if you go to print it, you can PDF it and it gives you a QR code specific to that incident. So then anybody could scan that and it would take them to the most current version of that page. So that was available all last year and continues to be available for anybody who wants it. It's one of those ones that's kind of in that continuous improvement cycle and was implemented last year as a way to replace the old version of technology that we were using that required me to write HTML code in the background to put words up on the website. Like, we were still doing that in 2022, unfortunately. Um, but now there's, that's all available. So it, anybody can access it. All you had to do was either have a phone or a tablet or a computer.
Okay, thank you. I just, I guess in the future, I just, I'm kind of hoping that ESS gets a little bit more involved with this kind of thing. It's just a, just a little simpler thing. Uh, for for Jeff, uh, in Merritt right now at the Nicola Base, we have the training center going on. We have a bunch of, we call them kids there. They look like Lego men running around out there. I was just wondering, how many do you put through in a normal training situations? You know how many kids actually go through that training? And is it two times this? Usually there's a group that comes in, graduates, and a second group's come in. Is this a two-time? But last year, I think it was only single because there was so much fire activity so quickly that they were gone before they were even finished. But I was just wondering, you know how many kids you put through on that?
So la- last year, we split it between Merritt and PG to try to do a north and south offering of it. And I think we did two in Merritt and two in PG, wasn't? And this year, we're going to do four in Merritt. So I I thi- I think it's it's going to be four boot camps and there's about 60, 60 participants in each of them. They go on through each each round and it's 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 a constant adjustment depending on on how our crews are shaping up with people recalling into those those positions, seeing what vacancies we have as well. So, yeah, there's there's definitely increased appetite for for attending these these trainings. And there's one going on right now and there's another one going on next week, I believe.
Director Lepso.
Hey, thank you very much. And I have a couple of comments. The first one is is thank you for the excellent job that I I considered that BC Wildfire Service did. Uh, I was able to sit in on the operations part where you had the daily updates. And one of the things was is what happened at those meetings had to stay at those meetings. So a lot of information didn't come out to the public. And we had the same thing in Chase. Everybody wanted to know every movement, every movement and in its operations, it's and I thought everything went very well. We were very well updated, a little chat thing you had there on the side and everything we requested was uh, given to the Village of Chase, which we still have a village of Chase. So just want to thank you for the great communications that we we had. The, one of the issues is is with everything is the media, like CBC, Facebook, sensationalism. It's just, we deal with it on the ongoing and it's just, it's not good. So much goes out there that's not correct. Information, you know, and and we're dealing with it right now with this backburn that's still in the Shushwap that was brought up. It was actually, still hasn't been revealed why it was done because it's operations, but the reason it was done was actually a success for what, once it's revealed why it was done, it actually was successful, in my opinion. And uh, yeah, that's uh, I just think you did a great job. And 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 the biggest thing again is this sensationalism and nobody wants to go to the BC wildfire Facebook page, but they'll go to the local Facebook page to hear from the local experts. So once again, I'd just like to thank you for all your efforts in uh, helping us out in the Village of Chase. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Director Stamer.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Just uh, wanted to make a quick comment too. I think everybody here is a little bit nervous because of what happened last year, Jeff. And I, it's refreshing to hear that uh, it looks like there's probably more going to be more resources available and and more boots on the ground. What's also refreshing to me, I believe, is that you're coming from the Caribou. And I know that they seem to be a little bit more responsive up there. So I'm hoping that that works down here as well. So good luck to you.
Thank you. Director Blackwell.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Specific question related to decisions to close backcountry areas or decisions to do evacuations beyond the wildfire science behind that, when you're dealing with things like BC Parks and and other agencies, who informs that decision? Who makes that decision? Uh, as far as closing a backcountry, closing a provincial park, um, is that collaborative? Do you make, does BC wildfire make that call? Does that agency make that call? How does that work?
Yeah, so so true to BC Parks piece, that when when we're seeing these incidents start to evolve and and up in up in your area, last year, unfortunately, that was that was the case. We were getting proactive with BC Parks and and sitting down, they're working through establishing an incident management team within BC Parks themselves for and and reviewing the 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 management plan for for the park to to see what tactics we had available to us, if if at all, as well as looking at how evacuations were going to be, what it would take to to empty an area, all those pieces. BC Parks make those recommendations and make those closures in that space. And that's, but it's done in consultation together. We're 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 sitting down and figuring those pieces out and that's seeing what makes sense depending on, because they need our information, we need theirs. It's it's a, it's a full collaboration.
Uh, and how does that relate outside of provincial parks, state crown land, um, TFL, for example, with all the four sites and wrecked areas sort of uh, between the Caribou and Clearwater, we we have a lot of that turf out there right now with a lot of people out of cell phone range. How, how, what, is it solely the decision of BC wildfire to do a closure or evacuation of that area?
Yeah, so we we have a few tools available to us under the Wildfire Act. And area restrictions is one of the ones that we will use when we are responding to large incidents and and using it as as a way to to kind of close out an area for for public safety. And but that comes with collaboration with local governments, the First Nations and yeah, a lot of people have to get around the table to to have that conversation, but we have some authorities in that space to to make those closures.
Okay, and last one. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you know, of course, I'd like to see a few more spots for crews and stuff in the North Thompson area. Uh, what's, what's the plan for cooperation with First Nations and and specifically SIM for expansion of those crews? Is that part of the plan to continue to work with them to expand First Nation Indigenous IA crews into those areas as a resource? And are there any restrictions on those crews as far as territory?
Yeah, good question. And so right now, we we're in the process of signing the contract for for this season, w- with one crew. They have the capacity to to provide two crews. So we've got a roster so that it's always fresh and we're always able to move through. And they've also got two vehicles. And long-term, there there's other opportunities there to maybe expand that out. And it comes at a huge cost and it it comes at a, yeah, a lot of training and and those pieces. So we're we're looking at the the whole cross-section of what other opportunities we can do to train community members as well. Looking at the fire departments as well as other options to see how we can build that whole response piece and then collaborate with our with our own crews in the area. But right now, those contracts are within traditional territory and we have created a kind of a response area.
Sorry, just last comment going on. Uh, I I do really have a fear that unlike Nutsford, you are going to see in areas where there's an absence of BC wildfire service staff on the ground, you are going to see uncooperative efforts to fight wildfire during the wildfire season. I see those starting to evolve in communities. Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that is always going to be a challenge for us, but we we're looking to to open that door to to have conversations ahead of time with communities, volunteer fire departments and societies, like let's let's come to the table together because we we have efficiencies by working together. We have the aviation resources that we can deploy. When we know that there's structure on an incident, we can be more strategic about how we place other pieces of equipment. And we can gain experience season on season and then we learn, communities learn how to work together in these spaces. And that's what we're looking for. But we we know we're going to come up against resistance, but we'll we'll keep trying.
Yeah. Uh, Director Hayward.
Yeah, sorry, I just want to add if you're having any conversations with people in your community that are kind of indicating that there's going to be resistance to either working with BC Wildfire Service or integrating in when we come in to respond to an incident. If we can't, like, if we're sending out aerial resources first and we can't confirm that there are people on the ground, like a tanker drop of retardant is not a light thing to hit those trees. The drought conditions have made the trees that are still standing and still alive pretty unstable and a lot more easy to knock over. So running around in an area without any sort of comms, without any sort of idea of who's on the ground is going to limit some of the operational tactics and resources that we have available. We very much appreciate all of the local knowledge, but people gained that local knowledge by staying alive and we're looking to keep all of those people alive so that that local knowledge can live on in those communities.
Thank you, Director Hayward.
Hello, thank you for that. I think you should write that paragraph and we'll share it. It's very important. And and my question actually is for the young lady here. Thank you so much about the informing people about the app and the online information. But another hat that I wear is I'm the literacy outreach coordinator for my region. We have many people who have a hard time even going online to sign up to a website. And and when you start talking an app, yes, probably if they have a cell phone, they can do that. But for you, it's easy to say, go to the app, hit this button, go there, go there, go there. In an exciting situation where they don't know if they're evacuating, if the fire is coming or whatever, I guarantee they'll have trouble just connecting to the app. So could we ask that you could give us a step, step, step list that you could share with the TNRD, that they could share with all of the board and we can share with our constituents? So they've got a go-to sheet that they can find what they need. I think that would really cut down on going to social media to find out what's going on. Because it's really easy to hit Facebook and open it up and read what people say. But it's a 10-step project to go to an app and sort it out when you're not familiar. But if they've got a little bit of instruction, I think it would really, really help and it would stop some of the crap that's out there of getting people into the wrong place at the wrong time and hindering what BC wildfire can do. And also, I really, really think you should do that thing about dropping the the retardant on the dry trees. That's really educational. So thank you very much for for what you've presented.
Yeah, I I will definitely take that back to my team and we'll come up with a few one-pager sort of walk-through step-by-step for people to kind of navigate both the website um, and the app. And then in addition to that, we'll also put some language in there that if anybody doesn't feel very confident doing either of those things, they're more than welcome to call the fire information line and myself or one of my team members are happy to take 15, 20 minutes, whatever it is, and walk them through it. Like, we kind of just mirror our screen to what they're seeing and then walk them through it step by step as well. If they'd prefer that in person, well, not in person, but over the phone interaction, we're more than happy to do it real time as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And I think it will stop some of the go-to social media first.
Director Getz, you said you had a, you had a little, little question.
Right. Back to ESS. Uh, I just want to, one of the things that we ran into last year and we ran into 2021 is BC wildfire would say to some people, look, things are getting bad, you need to get out now. And they would leave, but they weren't officially evacuated. They would then show up to our area with a car full of kids and themselves wanting to be looked after by ESS. But we can't intake them because they haven't been officially evacuated yet. So that becomes a problem. Now we've got people sleeping out in a parking lot that we cannot help. So I would suggest that in the future, uh, to let people know that if you're asking them to get out early, to let them know that there is no resource for them until they're officially evacuated because they show up and now they expect something and we cannot give it to them until they're officially evacuated. And it causes some problems. So that might be, I I understand why you're asking people to get out early, but they need to know that there is no help for them unless they've got relatives somewhere until they're officially evacuated. Thank you.
To point a clarity on that piece, we we don't issue evacuation orders. We make recommendations to the local government on what that may look like. And the only time we'll ever be be doing evacuations ourselves is is when it's a complete emergency and that fire is is in their backyard and it's it's coming, coming true. We we want to do as much advanced planning as possible and be able to work with the local. We we want to do as much advanced planning as possible and be able to work with the local government or First Nation to establish those trigger points and understand how it's going to look to evacuate that community. There's there's a there's a number of pieces that can get missed sometimes. We are are trying to streamline those processes and working with the M C R to look at what those official processes look like. And then how do we translate that down into local government?
So who if it who orders the evacuation of the those areas? Is that provincial?
Local government.
So let's talk Aspen Grove. There is no local government.
T N R D would do that.
Oh, T N R D. Okay, so. Okay, just so T N R D, so everything I said goes to you guys. Yeah.
Well, it it comes down to that information now. So from our incident command team and and the the conversation and collaboration calls that we're having to to understand what's happening on the landscape and where that fire is going to move. And then we start the planning piece from there.
Okay.
But we'll make a recommendation. We think the fire is going to be here in X number of days. Now over to in this example, T N R D to start planning that piece. I'm making.
That's on you.
There we go.
Okay, I just wanted to ask about the campfire bans and I'm thinking back to 2021 when the candidate day long weekend was approaching. And we were in the heat dome, so my community of Ashcroft, we hit forty eight point one, which was the culmination of six days of above forty temperatures. We had the George Road wildfire, which had started near Litton in the middle of June. We had Sparks Lake, which had already kicked off. Still no campfire ban. And I know you you did mention the science behind that, and I would be really interested because I get that there is a science to these things, but it's very hard when public perception is it's hotter than Hades out there. It has been for days. We've got two major fires that have started on our doorstep. And people, because everyone in the back country thinks they're Davy frickin' Crockett when it comes to lighting and maintaining a fire. Oh, sure, I can make, I can keep this in under control until they can't. You know, and I'm talking about people from the six oh four area code who who think they're, I don't know, Grizzly Adams. And and so it's very difficult when people in the community on the ground who've lived there for years and see conditions like they've never seen before, they see fires like they've never seen before and anyone who wants to could still go in the back country and light a campfire, really?
Yeah, so I I can't speak for the 2021. Obviously, I was up in the Caribou at that time and different jurisdiction. But there's there's a lot of pieces weighed up in that space and and majority of our fires aren't started from from campfires. Most people are are managing their fires safely when they are out there recreating. There has been scenarios where obviously a few campfires have escaped. When we're looking at evaluating the information, it's it's really looking at what's what's the probability of the spread? What how thing, what's the humidity? What's what's the likelihood of growth with this kind of incident? If it was to spread out. Things that we do leading into long weekends is our firewarden program, having them out there patrolling. Conservation officers are out there and they're issuing tickets and violations when people are in non compliance with with the regs. We we want to have the ability for people that are abiding by the rules to be able to recreate and enjoy those pieces and make decisions themselves. We don't want to be restricting unless we have to because of our our actual need. But every every day and every week, we are assessing those conditions and continually assessing those conditions, as well as looking at what resources we have available, as well as looking at what other incidents we have to make that informed decision of whether we're going to put it on for this week or not and and keeping our partners engaged as well. So. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have to break for a photograph at a certain time? CEO Hilda Brand or?
We don't have to, no.
Okay. So I have a note here that Mr. Skrepnik wants to say a few words and then CEO Hilda Brand as well. And if anyone else wants to chime in, please put your hand up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. So just in the vein of the discussion we've been having this morning, both from the the Nutsford Group and from the wildfire service, we thought we would just provide a quick kind of update on our own preparedness here at T N R D. I think a a an interesting thing and folks in the room are are quite familiar with the challenges of of the scale of our jurisdiction. You know, the the lion's share of the regional district is within the the jurisdiction of the Kamloops Fire Center from where Jeff and Nicole represent. But we actually touch four of the provinces, six fire centers, just because of the scale of T N R D. So there's a portions of Area B that are within the Prince George Fire Center. Area, area E within the Caribou Fire Center and even parts of Area I that are within the Coastal Fire Center. So that can also cause, you know, they are all within the B C wildfire service, but you know, four distinct kind of regions, different management, different potentially regulations. Jeff was speaking towards the campfire bans, things like that could be could be different between those areas. So like I said, I just wanted to provide a brief update. C A O Hilda Brand had had touched on some of these things in a recent C A O report, but we just wanted to flesh it out a little bit further, given that we have wildfire here as well. And then Justin, I think there's a PowerPoint deck. Can you flash that up? No, it should be. Yeah. No, there should be a separate one I sent yesterday. Okay. Well, yeah, we'll find that. So just, yeah, a few things that we want to touch on. So just some of the 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 training staff have been engaged in some of our community outreach and engagement activities, what we've been doing in terms of of preparedness. And then the progress that we're at with some of our grant funded progress projects as well. On the training piece, something that that I I really can't recognize enough in terms of the strength of our REOC here at T N R D is is really driven by by the staff that we've got. I would, I would say we likely have the most seasoned, experienced E O C in the province. Given the experience of our staff from this past year, twenty twenty one, twenty seventeen, even two thousand and three, for some staff members who were who were around at that time. So not only that experience, but just the the willingness, the flexibility that they have, the enthusiasm. We've had staff in the room, you know, after midnight with their kids in tow because that's the reality of of their childcare situation and then that's where they need to be, right? So just the amount of dedication is something that I really, I really can't recognize enough. Some of you are aware, I I I also teach for the Justice Institute of B C, so I I take time off to travel the province and instruct in other jurisdictions. And it is certainly it is certainly challenging in the province right now, the amount of turnover and attrition, the amount of of knowledge that's leaving a lot of organizations is quite significant. And the fact that we've retained so many of our staff, the fact that we have staff that not only are still with the organization, but are still very enthusiastic to be working in the E O C. I think just speaks to their their level of commitment. So I think Justin, I saw it was coming together there. Okay. So yeah, some of the training and one thing I do want to emphasize, fantastic. So the training that our folks take, what I want to say right off the bat is that you know, with with very few exceptions, people aren't being voluntold to take these courses. People aren't being, you know, mandated to take these courses. These are things that people are eagerly eagerly looking to do. They are, they are proactively putting themselves forward to take them. And I think again, that just speaks to to how 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 lucky we are in terms of our staff's level of engagement. So the vast majority of these courses are paid for by the province through E M C R and and delivered by the Justice Institute, as I mentioned. We have multiple staff in the building who have either completed or are in progress of actually pursuing a credential certificate in emergency management through the J I, which is something that comes typically not only at a, you know, a time and effort, but also, you know, personal, personal cost as well. And I think again, that just speaks to how how engaged folks are. As I said, very well positioned, given the the skills and experience and the training that we've got. Another benefit too, I'm a nationally certified incident command system instructor, so we've been able to start delivering training internally to our staff and our volunteer fire departments at no cost, whereas that's something what previously we would have to go do externally, whether it's through the Justice Institute or or other organizations. So that does save us a lot of time and effort in terms of getting our own folks up to speed. And we've had a number of our fire departments taking some of those initial courses already this year. So in terms of some of the courses we've had staff taking, I won't go through the whole list here, but everything from, you know, the recovery side of emergency management, the preplanning, the response phase, evacuations, the new Emergency and Disaster Management Act, Bill thirty one, as as Terry alluded to, does have a big focus on business continuity planning that was not previously something within that legislation. So we've had had staff, again, proactively going out, finding these courses, taking them so that we're as well positioned as we can be. In terms of some other courses we pursued outside of the Justice Institute, again, in the incident command system, drone, you know, on unmanned vehicle operation as well. We purchased a drone a few years ago at T N R D here, just a small, like, yeah, something you can buy at Costco essentially. Nothing fancy, not anything that requires, you know, certification. And its utility is is incredible, you know, a six hundred dollar device. The amount of time we can save, the safety exposure that we can avoid by using that drone. Last summer, we were able to use it when we were doing damage assessment from the East Bush Creek Fire. There was a two or three kilometer long driveway that was going to be totally impassable by vehicle, so it would have probably taken a couple hours to get up there. Instead, we were able to launch a drone and in a matter of minutes had what we needed to to get the information and move on. And then also some some internal training kind of in the information officer crisis communications vein as well. And certainly, Mr. Davies, but a number of the staff within our people and engagement department have been very eagerly doing that training in terms of taking on the information officer role to be our our spokespeople once we're activated. I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Noff here just to talk about some of our community workshops that we've been doing recently.
Sure. Thanks, Kevin. Good. Good morning, everyone. So yeah, spring is often, well, is the time for community outreach and we've been out and about doing doing a lot of education, a lot of fire smart tables. Was out, as mentioned by the Nutsford Group, I joined them when they presented to the Farmers Institute out at Chase. Great discussions, really good to see a lot of people are really engaged and, you know, I think we we're seeing bigger engagement from community members based on last year's fire season. We're looking at getting out to East Barrier Lake, been invited to do some presentations there. It's going to be in conjunction with a fire smart presentation, I think. Been working with E S S teams, developing new E S S teams. We have a new team in Chase, team coming up to speed in Ashcroft, so great to get out to those communities and support them. And then engaging a part of the fire smart process is the creation of a fire smart roundtable. So this is a fairly broad net that's been cast in communities, community forests, industry, critical infrastructure holders, fire departments, residents. So we've attended four of those in Clinton, Clearwater, Little Wet End. We're also over in, we went to one in Salmon Arm because of course, you know, our border with the Columbia Shu Shwap Regional District. Lot of workshops going on, really successful workshop held in this room with the Ministry of Agriculture, really focusing on some of the processes and procedures that we have to support the agriculture community in in evacuation. Again, back to E S S, this last weekend, there was a big conference held in Kamloops here. It's the acronyms N E S T. It's the Network of Emergency Support Services Teams. So a provincial wide conference and talking about new policies and procedures and support for our E S S volunteers who are really the most critical resource when we're talking about evacuations and supporting our public. Going to leave this weekend, next week, there's a fire smart conference up in Prince George. So again, another provincial level conference, looking at response and recovery and fire smart activities. So really looking forward to that. This week, we had the opportunity to attend a session with the province hosted by Emergency Management Climate Readiness. Got a little bit of a seasonal update on drought, wildfire threat, snow packs, that sort of thing. So we're positioned with some good knowledge going into the season on what that looks like. Jeff didn't talk about wildfire threat, but certainly we did go into the fall in drought. It's been the snow pack numbers. Provincially, I think we're at about sixty three percent, the South Thompson's at about seventy, the North Tom or the North Thompson's about seventy percent. South Thompson's about eighty. So we're we're looking at some slow or low snow pack numbers. And we'll see what the June rain rains do. That's really what we look at for fire threat going on to the summers. So not so much the snow packs, although that certainly sets us up for drought. It's that rain that we're really looking for. So we'll see what that looks like. And had the honor of attending the partnership tables, which is really focusing on relationships and emergency management with First Nations. And that was held in Klon earlier this month. We're going to be partaking in some exercises. There's a North Thompson exercise that's really be hosting by SIM. So we're looking at communication protocols and working with other governments on how we're going to communicate and support each other in large events. Looking at doing a tabletop in Clinton. That'll include Bonaparte First Nation and High Bar. Going to be doing something in the Litton area. Again, really focusing on First Nation relations. So we're organizing that with the First Nation communities. And then again, we'll be doing likely the same sort of thing in what we call the Lakes Division with Niskanil, Skwailax, Skrapnikulu, Adams Lake, Village Chase, and probably the C S R D will take part in that exercise too. And again, looking at communication protocols and and how we deal with access passes and some of the issues that are cross bordered, cross jurisdiction.
Okay. So yeah, in terms of some of the kind of concrete things we've been working on in terms of the preparedness side, so as has been mentioned a few times in this room, the new Emergency and Disaster Management Act came into effect in November. So we did have to go in and update a number of our kind of forms, templates, processes, things like that, particularly around the declaration of states of local emergency, evacuation orders, things like that. The the a a a big kind of tangible piece out of that, and and I'm sure Chair Roden was thankful for it, is that states of local emergency are now in effect for fourteen days at a time instead of seven. So it was previously that we were having to redeclare states of local emergency every seven days, times that by ten electoral areas, depending on how many are impacted, and and it can amount to quite a bit of paperwork, which does actually have to fully go from us all the way up to the minister at E M C R for for signing. So that has that has been lengthened a bit. So we have got in our E O C facility set up on the third floor. So our I T folks have had a chance to get in, get all our equipment set up. We've got the room kind of configured for activation. We'll be looking, obviously, we're not currently activated and hopefully we aren't for for some time to come. So we'll likely still be utilizing that room as meeting space for a time being, but we're we're able to get it up and going much quicker now, thanks to the work of our I T folks. We have a staffing plan put together for the Emergency Operations Center through the summer. Now, obviously, it's it's hard to fully plan that out, given that we don't know when we're going to be activating into what scale. But what this plan does is basically guarantee that from now until, you know, the end of September, all the critical positions are staffed seven days a week. There is someone available who can come in for those key positions if we Uh, who can come in uh for those key positions if we have something that happens. Uh, you know, on a Saturday evening, uh, we know who's available and who's going to be able to respond and uh come in. Uh, we do also have three hundred and sixty-five days a year, uh, a duty officer on standby, and that's a rotation of about a half dozen of our staff. Uh, who take the phone for a week at a time, and that's the main. Primary and first point of contact for the province and for other agencies, uh, if there's something that we need to be made aware of. Um, and then we have also purchased the second uh response uh vehicle, uh, we uh purchased this pickup last year, so. Uh, you know, fully uh deckled uh and outfitted as an emergency response vehicle. Um, this worked very well last year in terms of our visibility out there, uh, working with the public, uh, working with other agencies. Um, the the uh benefit of uh. The benefit of the location of the activity last year, of course, was that, um, you know, in a region that's forty-four thousand square kilometers, our two kind of main major incidents. Uh, were within about a half hour drive of our office here, so that did allow us to be in the field a lot more, uh, which we saw some significant advantages of. Uh, but of course, it is uh certainly well within the realm of possibility that we're going to have multiple uh. Incidents going on at the same time, potentially on completely different uh sides of the regional district, so. Having more vehicles uh that can uh, you know, go out to these incidents uh and uh be interoperable with the other response agencies is critical. Uh, so we've uh purchased a second vehicle and we're just in the um uh process of getting it uh properly uh outfitted. So in terms of uh some of the projects we've got going on with the grants that uh the board has uh enabled us to go after, so. Uh, both of these are through the uh Community Emergency Preparedness Fund uh of U B C M, so in two thousand and three. Uh, we applied for the uh Emergency Operations Center Grant, so that did pay for a lot of the new equipment that went into that purpose-built E O C. Uh, we also uh. Received a grant for our Emergency Support Services Teams, so those E S S teams, as Mike alluded to, are are located in our seven-member municipalities. Um, which are uh, uh, well, all of the municipalities except for Kamloops, Merritt, Logan Lake, and Sun Peaks uh are involved in that. Uh, so that was to purchase things like uh personal protective equipment, clothing, uh signage kits, things like that. Uh, and also replacing some equipment, uh, we um, uh. The the Chair Roden had mentioned the George Road Fire in twenty twenty-one in Litton, which uh was in mid-June. Uh, as a result of that fire, we had moved some additional E S S resources uh into the community. Uh, at the time, uh, the best location for them to be placed was the R C M P station. And of course, unfortunately, that building uh uh was destroyed in the fire, so we lost quite a bit of our equipment there, so we've been able to replace that with this grant funding. Uh, the other twenty twenty-three grant project that's ongoing is around the evacuation route planning, and I'll have Mr. Noff speak to this one.
Sure, thanks, Kevin. So, um. I know we've briefed a couple times on the evacuation route planning, um. We, there's currently sixteen plans that the the T N R D has that cover the entirety of the T N R D. Um, they're they're pretty old, very high level, we we took five of those plans this year and um. Dug into them a little uh deeper, they're in the final stages of development now, I expect to see a deliverable. Uh, ideally by the end of this week or next week. We're going to have to do some integration with our team, um, our own geomatics and G I S. Uh, you know, bring them into our system, and then, you know, there's some formatting issues and stuff. Ultimately, we do want to put this out into the public domain, we don't want to hide anything, we want everybody in the um. All the residents to see what we see, but really the primary purpose is for our own planning. Um, you know, we're looking at a lot of these geographic areas, and you know, some of them are pretty complicated, if you get up into the. You know, Pressy Lake, Green Lake, Bonaparte Lake area, it's a maze of Forest Service roads. And, you know. The residents know how they got there, they know how they get, they get in and out of their own residences. If they're looking at the T N R D to tell them how to get out of their residence. Uh, well, you know, there may be a little bit misinformed, because um residents know the land base better than we do. This is what we're trying to do with the evacuation plans, we're trying to look at places. Where, okay, if the primary access is gone, what does secondary access look like? Um, if that fire is blocking that primary road, what are the secondaries? Uh, and we're trying to put those into our corporate knowledge in a plan so that we can actually open something up, I mean, Kevin and I. We've been here a while, we understand the land base, I know in Litton. There's a footbridge, there's the train bridge, there's the ferry, if you're trying to get over the west side of the river. Um, how the the goal is to really put that in to the corporate memory. So that the next generation of emergency managers know this too. A lot of the Forest Service roads have never really been clearly identified as egress routes. So, you know, looking at some of these geographic areas and figuring out, okay, well, what is the best route? For us to plan if that primary access is closed, and then we can talk and, you know, part of the plan is talking with. The Ministry of Forests and their Engineering Division to get someone to drive those roads. Are there, is there blowdown, uh, are the roads still passable, because resource roads change. On a year-to-year basis, whether, you know, someone's hauling, whether they're actually. Um, still being maintained is something that we're going to have to determine on. Uh, the day of the event, or, you know, when we're approaching the alert stage, and we're looking at this, and. We have, you know, total buy-in with the Ministry of Forests, and they've looked at these plans already to say. No, 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 that thing that you put on the map isn't really a road. Or or this is the better route. And, you know, then we're going to get them to go out and, you know, um, as Trish will tell you, the uh. People got lost in the woods, trying, trying to, you know, escape from fire before. So where do we need to put up signs, um, what's that process look like, where are we going to put security? Where do we need traffic control, these are all things that we're thinking about in the plan, so that um. We can go out and get those resources in place in a timely manner. And and, you know, uh, lots of checklists put into the toolkit so that, you know, we can hit the high points of what we really need to do. Um, checklists are a good thing, um, big fan of checklists, because, you know, ultimately, stress makes you stupid. And forget things, so having that list in front of you go, okay, yes, I did this, 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 and this. Provides a lot of great value in an evacuation plan.
And there's, um, as as part of those checklists includes ones for the elected officials in those areas as well. Um, you know, in terms of what your, what your role would be, what it wouldn't be. Um, and again, to Mike's point, just, you know, in emergencies, we're all a little more taxed than usual, so. These checklists just are such a good kind of uh backpocket resource to make sure that we're, you know, we're staying on track. Um, yeah, and I think the last one here, um, so I'll speak to the E O C grant, so, um, uh. I I prepared this presentation yesterday morning, uh, so I was a little cheeky saying we were waiting confirmation, but uh it was announced yesterday that, yes, we were successful in our twenty twenty-four grant. Uh, so that is going to be another thirty thousand dollars uh towards equipment for the E O C and for our uh response staff. Um, a a big piece of this, um. And I'll I'll leave it to our I T folks to um kind of unpack further in the fall, but we are transitioning to a, you know, internet-based phone system. Uh, so uh with this grant, we are purchasing some equipment to support that, so that the E O C will be able to uh transition into that pretty seamlessly. Um, as well as some other uh kit, additional laptops, backup power, radios, things like that. Um, and then to Mike's previous point, yes, so then we have also, uh, this was on the agenda yesterday that the board approved. The application for an additional thirty thousand for uh continuing the evacuation route planning process. As Mike said, we chunked off about five of the plans last year, uh, so looking to continue that, and obviously, once we've uh, you know, heard from U B C M. We can uh, we can continue with that work. Uh, and I think, I think that's it from us, yes, any, any questions, be welcome.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen, for that very comprehensive review, good, I saw the notice about the thirty thousand come in, I thought, yes, awesome for the E O C. Questions, comments, Director Sal, first out of the gate there, so you go ahead, any other hands? So, go ahead, Director Sal.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, a question and a comment, a question is, um, how much has Bill thirty-one uh affected the workload of your department? Um, you mentioned additional training and business continuity, um, does it appear we need to add additional headcounts to satisfy Bill thirty-one requirements?
So, um. Bill thirty-one. Really, if you look at, there, there's a few things that are new, um, a lot of the stuff around First Nations engagement and requirements engaging with First Nations. Is is new, um, you know, uh, business continuity, that's new. A lot of the things were all always in the last legislation. It just wasn't clear. So this new legislation has really clarified a a lot of the stuff that was between the lines in the old Emergency Act. The workload is really going to be coming when the new regulations come up. So, uh, ultimately, legislation is created, after legislation, the government creates the regulations. Which are really um the direction on how you're going to achieve the high-level goals identified in the legislation. And after the regulations, we get policies developed and then, you know, guidelines after that. So there's still a lot of information that's going to come from the the new legislation. Uh, we heard the other day, I mentioned at that E M C R Regional Seasonal, we went to. Mid twenty twenty-five, we expect to see the first couple regulations. So there, there's still. Some uh time before we see really what the impacts of the regulations are going to be. And I do expect that there will be increased workload from those regulations, there's things like risk assessments. That need to be accomplished, don't really know what that looks like yet. Because, again, this will be dependent on the regulations, so yes, I anticipate there will be more work. Um, just keeping up with the reg, the the development of the legislation is a lot of work. So, um, yes, there has been a net increase, um, but we haven't really seen the major impacts yet.
Yeah, and, yeah, just further to that, um, so three of the big kind of ticket uh items addressed in the legislation, so. Um, you know, the content of emergency management plans, uh, the business continuity plans, as we talked about previously, and then the. The hazard risk, vulnerability analysis, those are all going to be further, well, they're going to be codified, full stop, in the regulations. So it's, it's, we're, we're focusing on this evacuation planning right now, because that's something that, you know, we, we know what that's going to look like. Um, it's something that we can get done in the interim, but a lot of those. Higher-level plans, we're, we're going to need to see how the regulations spell them out, and, yeah, as Mike said, the indication we've got is that. That's going to be mid twenty twenty-five, I I'm sure the upcoming provincial election factors into that as well, uh, in terms of their development. Um, so, yeah, there's, uh, I I think, you know, there's, there's certainly a lot of angst around the new act, kind of in the, in the industry. Um, you know, we went from a fifteen-or-so-page piece of legislation to a hundred-and-twenty page, so. Uh, I think a lot of that, though, is just the uncertainty, and in some cases, kind of a a lack of clarity, so we're, we're working through that.
Uh, thank you very much for that clarification, just to know what to expect in terms of budget and and stuff for the taxpayers in the future. Um, and then with the comment is, I'm just sharing an idea about volunteer pools, um, I understand SIM First Nation opens their. Wildfire Response Volunteers to residents as far away from Chutwa as Kamloops. Um, unlike structural fires, there's time to stage for wildfire response, um, in one of my. Upper Clearwater Community Meetings on last Monday night, um. One of the uh challenges that the Volunteer Fabricate Society um has is the uh small. Population of Upper Clearwater, um, I shared that setup arrangement that SIM has uh with the upper, with the society and saying that. Maybe, you know, why limit? You know, who said we had, you're the member has to be living in Upper Clearwater, uh, why can't we have a Birch Island resident who's one to volunteer? Um, and there is no, nothing in Birch Island so far that I can volunteer to, uh, so why don't we do have a outreach to other communities as well? Um, so that's just an idea, um, I'm still waiting to hear back from the leadership of the society, whether or not, that's, it's up to them, I'm just. It's, it's an idea, um, and I also don't want to, I also will have to consult with other uh communities so that, you know, we don't come across as volunteer poaching. So, yeah, just sharing that, thank you.
Thank you, Director Onslow.
Thank you for that, I just, uh, along the lines of volunteer fire departments, I'm curious, um. If the T N R D sees a way that they would be able to support in some of the training for these volunteer departments, or. Is that solely the responsibility in Blue River of the Improvement District? And is there communication, like, you guys are really well organized with a full team? And the Improvement District is run by volunteers who are not as trained as you guys, so I'm curious if there's a. Flow of information between those departments and the volunteer departments that are protecting areas of the T N R D that perhaps could be. Using more of the services within the T N R D?
Yeah, sure, I'll jump in on that, um, a couple of things to unpack there, um, on the. The non-T N R D fire department, so any actual wildfire response and coordination is through wildfire, not through the T N R D. So if they're actually going to get deployed or interested in getting deployed, that communication should be with the, with the local fire center. Um, in terms of the the training piece, um, that's something that I think was, we expected to bring up today for discussion, and maybe this is as good a time as any. Around what that looks like, um, as was alluded to before, our current policy um sets that, um. Uh, there's no funding from the T N R D to other um structural fire departments that are not T N R D administered. Um, but this concept, as we, as we heard from, from uh the folks in Nutzford, uh, who had a very successful model this last year. Um, this has brought up the discussion around, is there a different mechanism that the T N R D could look at in supporting of. Um, training for wildfire response. So not related to fire protection, not related to structural fire protection, but related to wildfire response. Um, so that's. Kind of the, the idea that uh we strongly suspect there's a lot of interest in that could be. Um, further discussed here this morning, I don't know if Scott, you wanted to jump in on this now?
Yeah, Chair Roden is, I think we'd like to get some direction from the board, just a simple motion to allow us to go back and explore that. Uh, because structural, we cannot touch, there's too much liability in that, we've got legal. Um, opinions that, that's a really tough one for us to fund, but we need, need to deal with the B C wildfire, the. Societies that we've talked about today to be able to hopefully help them in some way, but we just need direction from the board, because we don't have budget, we don't have a plan. Or strategy around that, so just something simple as. Greg, maybe you could come up with something, just something simple to help us go and bring that back to you as information.
Thank you, I think Tricia, Director Thor might have something to say on this. All right, so, so the motion is, if someone could just give us all a general idea of the wording?
Motion would be uh for staff to have direction to explore the concept of the T N R B. T N R D being able to support wildfire support training. And if that requires looking at legal, whatever it is, but that we can explore that so that we can help our residents, please and thank you.
Do we need to have the structural component in there?
No structure.
Yeah, it would, equipment potentially, uh, but not, not structural, it just B C wildfire.
Yeah, training and equipment.
Yep, so I think we would uh read that as something like that the um, that the committee um instructs staff to bring a report back to the board on possibilities. For um, training on wildfire suppression and potential funding streams for this.
And does that have a second, or? Director Hayward, thank you very much. All right, discussion on the motion? All right, on the question, all those in favor? Online lady? Thank you, Director Newstater? We, we need to hear, we need to hear you.
You hear me now?
That's perfect, we can. Okay, thank you, anyone opposed? That is carried.
Um, and then just, uh, the kind of second part of Director Onslow's question around, um, like the interactions with. The the non-T N R D uh volunteer fire department, so. Um, as part of the evacuation route planning process, our contractor is going into the communities. And, you know, talking to the volunteer fire departments, uh, engaging the elected officials, talking to the community groups to kind of get that local knowledge. Um, and then that's also just part of what Mike and I are doing day to day, is, is kind of building those connections, uh. Whether it's with the fire departments or the community groups, uh, just so that if we do have an incident in that area, uh, we know who's who and processes are understood.
Director Stamer.
Uh, thanks very much, Madam Chair, and thanks very much for all the work that both you fellows and your staff have done. Speaking on behalf of uh Municipality of Barrier and uh Director Hayward, hopefully. Uh, all the training that's been going on this spring has been excellent for our volunteer firefighters. All the other groups that came into our community that long weekend, or that one weekend. To participate in that, in that program, I believe was incredibly valuable for all the organizations in there. And again, it gets back to initial attacking and understanding the parameters around that, so kudos to everybody, including the B C wildfire service that was. kudos to everybody, including the BC Wildfire Service that was involved in that process, because I hear nothing but positive feedback from that, so not only does that give me a little bit of a sense of relief, but also members of our communities as well, knowing that everybody is doing everything they can to prepare before, you know, the inevitable wildfire season that's upon us. Quick question, it was brought up about some of the changes in legislation in regards to evacuation alerts and orders and pets. Can you elaborate a little bit on that and how we're supposed to stick handle our way through that?
So um, not a lot of changed around, you know, the alerts and orders process. What has changed is in the definitions of the act, they have included pets in the definition of animals. Uh, so in the previous act, there was an obligation to um or uh supports to help evacuate agricultural animals, which was really defined under the Farm Act and by the Ministry of Agriculture. So if you had a cow, well, that was a pet cow. Um, you you're not really an agricultural operation with a pet cow. Or, you know, two llamas, um, those are pets. So now the definition has included pets in the definition of animals. Now, one of the big challenges here, and we we brought it up with the province at that session we had earlier this week, is even though we have new legislation, the financial guidelines we operate under are dated, what, I mean, we got the news?
Two thousand five, I think, two thousand eight, yeah.
Yeah, two thousand and eight, vintage two thousand and eight. So those are actually the financial guidelines that we will be operating under this year. So even though there are some things in the new act that say, oh, well, you know, new definitions, new expectations, without financial guidelines that have been revised, uh, we don't have a lot of tools to deal with those issues. So we did raise this with the province and um there is a process we can use through the province to get approval to fund, it's called an expenditure authorization form. And um, you know, we fill out the details and say, this is what it's going to cost, are you going to approve this? So we can use that process to to deal with the one offs. But there's currently no guidelines or policies that really supports this new obligation.
Uh, if I may supplement, the reason I brought it up, Mike, is because I think we need to be able to have those supports in place. Uh, similar to the BC Cattlemen's Association, when, you know, you're having to move, you know, herds of cattle and or even horses or anything like that, large animals. And and the reason I'm bringing it up is because our residents are going to wonder if all of a sudden we put them under an alert or an order, how do we move that llama? Where are the support mechanisms to try to do that? And I'm hoping that between now and then, we can have a conversation with the provincial government, say, hey, you know, we may need to be able to use somebody's horse trailer, how are we going to be able to do that? Who's going to be able to do that? Who's going to be able to go into those evacuated or areas or or whatever, and how we actually get those animals out? So I appreciate, you know, the conversation with you, with you fellows, and hopefully we can work our way through it so that, you know, somebody's not going to stay behind worried about their llama, because there'll be a, you know, a a a system in place to be able to get that animal out of there safely.
Yeah, and um historically, the support for those um pet pets and uh, you know, little hobby farm animals and things have come from volunteer organizations. And, you know, so in this part of the world, um, you know, we've seen four paws previously, the SPCA, and there's um another organization, I just actually had a phone call with them last week, um, CDART, which is the Canadian Disaster Animal Response Team. So there are volunteer groups, and historically, that's where the supports come through. It's either community and or volunteers. So um, you know, we're already talking with those organizations to, you know, ensure that they're still engaged. And then we can see what other supports we can bring to the table uh financially to help support those.
Awesome.
I mean, all that's the key message is build your own plan for your own, your own family, and if your family includes an ostrich and a llama, then, you know, you should have a plan that at least can fail on game day and we can support you in another way, but you're primarily responsible to have that plan. So, you know, that's the message that we need to get to residents is think about this now and what you're going to do.
Yeah, thanks very much for that.
Um, and a another uh wrinkle as well is when we brought this up with the the province earlier this week was um, there there's a bit of a delineation between the supports for evacuating those animals and caring for them once they've been evacuated. And the sense we get is the province is more so looking at the caring for them once they've been evacuated. So the the logistics of getting them out, there's still a bit of uncertainty there that we're going to work to to get cleared up.
Thank you. I've got Director Thorpe and then Director Middleton.
Yeah, I was just chomping at the bit there. Um, so there are a ton of volunteer groups that will help you get your animals out. Having lived this, I can tell you who they are now. I didn't know before. CDART, you can use them, you can use BC and Alberta livestock evacuation, you can use BC livestock evacuation. Four Paws will deal with the uh the food and care after, but these groups are based on volunteers. The trick is, they need to be asked to come in. Until they are asked, they can't deploy. If you look at CDART, for example, they are trained in hazmat. So these people are out there, they can help you, they are volunteer. If anybody needs their contact information, reach me, I'll give it to you. Because it, this is critical. People will stay behind, or they will do things that are way outside the box to get their animals out. And we need to protect the people and the animals, it's critical. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Director Middleton.
Thank you. If we just go back to the uh, just to the motion that was put forward about uh, could the TNRD uh possibly help with cost of training or whatever for uh for these associations that are now going to be set up for uh for wildfire um training and fighting? But I wonder if that should be expanded to be to having some sort of in probably in the EA areas, not uh not necessary municipalities or whatnot, but also some mechanism to help fund some of these associations with their startup costs. Because, and I'm quite sure the gentleman at the back, um, have probably put money out of their own pockets to to get this going and to ramp it up and it it, you know, cost money to register societies, it costs money to, you know, for advice to, uh, you know, basically sort of set up a society. And that if you're relying strictly on the donated time and dollars of the volunteers to get these things going, I think we'd see better success if there was some some mechanism that that some funds could be sent their way to help with that.
Uh, through you, Chair Roden, um, I I I think the motion itself is broad enough that we can include that, so we appreciate that feedback and we can make sure we cover that as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Director Grenier and then Director Hayward?
Thank you, Chair, and following up with that and hearing the presentations today, I'm just wondering, we we've got, the first group said we really utilized our training well. The second group, uh, BC Wildfire Service says, don't get in our way and stay away from falling trees and fire drops. Um, can we maybe just put on seminars and get people trained with the one hundred and the one eighty-five offer throughout the TNRD and the in the rural areas? Like in Cherry Creek, we don't have a community group, even though there's people talking about it, but there's lots of people keen on wildfire or FireSmart, and then probably keen on taking one of these courses if we could just simply put, you know, twenty or thirty thousand dollars, not look for a grant, but just say, TNRD is putting on wildfire training programs by a qualified person. And you could uh sign up for it on a weekend and get trained. Learn to get out of the way, learn to help out where you are, if you're keen to take this course and get certified. Just wondering if that's something part of that motion could, or that motion, if you could look at that and see if that's got any relevance, whether it's a good idea or not.
Uh, through Chair Roden, that is our intention.
Uh, thank you, Director Hayward.
Thank you. I'm kind of going back a little bit, but I just wondered when we were talking about pets versus horses and cattle and things in twenty seventeen, when the fairgrounds opened their gates, and we worked closely with the TNRD, which was greatly appreciated because God knows how we would have fed all of those animals, but we had five hundred animals that qualified. And then we had the pets, so we ended up with almost eight hundred animals on the fairgrounds. And that was incredible. And those pets were fed by local donations. Uh, people who just came up with money and pets were llamas and pigs and a cow and a bucket of chickens. And it just went on and on, mules and donkeys and, but they didn't fit in livestock. So it's great to see that they're starting to consider that, because people will not leave their home if they can't get fluffy llama into the trailer. Guaranteed, and and that is, that is a one of the greatest risks. I have photographs of our people loading llamas and the fire is from here to that wall behind their trailer to get those people out of there. So so we don't want to do that again, and just thank you for going there.
Thank you, and I have Director Morris.
Uh, thank you through the chair. Um, I thank you for the pet discussion, uh, near and dear to probably most people in this room's hearts. Indeed, but I just, one other one I want to put on as a reminder, uh, and it's around volunteers again on uh fire protection work and um liability, whatever, around protective gear. And in fact, something as simple as putting in a grant and aid request uh for our volunteers to get the the level of protective gear that they need to do their role. Um, I think we have a little bit of work to move that through the system from a policy perspective. So I just want to add that to the list of things that we need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, and I just, I mean, it's been touched on, and I wondered whether I should say anything. Back in twenty seventeen, my son dubbed them Facebook Fire Chiefs. Um, and just as you'll never know how many engineers live in your community until you start planning a major project, you'll never know how many trained firefighter specialists you have in your community until there's a fire, and then everyone suddenly is an expert and has an uh, an opinion. And I I think the the idea of talking to people who who, you know, I don't need no stinkin' training. I know my way around the woods, I know what to do. Well, I think we all need to play our part, if we do hear about that, to talk to these people and say, you know, no, you don't necessarily. And we need to know where we can direct them so that they they've got that drive, that energy, that willingness to help. Let's try and channel it in the right direction so that we don't get a bunch of rogue people running around the backwoods, we don't know where they are, and they're going to get hit with fire retardant or danger trees or something. So I think, you know, with the resources we have had today, we we have some idea who we can reach out to and and where we can direct them so that they can get the training that they need to be an asset and and a real help um during challenging fire seasons, which I hope we do not have this year. Uh, Director Middleton?
Uh, just back and it speaks a little bit and and Mike to your uh sort of comment about just individuals being able to sign up and perhaps the TNRD would pay for these courses and whatnot. I I sort of speak a little uh hesitantly about that plan is I think that, you know, the volunteers should be run through an association uh rather than just having individuals try and train themselves or certify themselves individually. Because that speaks to the exact uh issue that, you know, um, Chair Roden is speaking to is that somebody's going to say, I've got a certificate, I bought my own PPE gear, and I'm going to go and I'm going to go fight fire. And I think that's where we would see a lot of the individuals trying to take control of situations that they they are clearly sort of, you know, hijacking rather than helping. So I would prefer to see that if we're at the TNRD are going to provide funding to help with training and whatnot, that it's done through members or individuals who are signed up, you know, as volunteers with a local association and not just as an individual.
No, and Chair through Director Milton, yeah, absolutely. And and I, what we don't want to see happening is is people, uh, you know, say they get this training, flashing that card around as a get out of jail free card or as a a pass to get through a checkpoint. That's that's certainly not the case. And and that's, you know, the the opposite of what the Nutsford Group here has done in terms of putting structure to that and um responsibility to it. So we don't have folks just out there freelancing because they, yeah, they they feel that they're equipped to do so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen, for your presentation. Thank you to everyone here for coming and talking to us about fire. And I think we're going to move from pets to pests now. Waiting two hours to say that. Timing is everything, so we're going to move on to everyone's favorite summer visitor, mosquitoes.
Yes, indeed. So uh, I'll just uh kind of do a bit of an introduction here, um, uh, and some context for the board. So our uh our mosquito control program uh for for some time uh TNRD uh has sort of been kind of run off the side of the of the desk of various staff. And uh, up until recently, that was uh Martin Dixon in our in our solid waste department. Um, when Martin moved on this fall, uh, there was a recognition that uh this would be a good opportunity to look at doing a bit of reorganization about uh how this portfolio is handled, um, and that was uh in conjunction with looking at some changes for our our invasive plant program, uh, which uh my colleague Colleen Hogan oversees. So um, as a result of that, we brought the mosquito control program into the community services uh sphere. Uh, we uh promoted calling up to our supervisor of integrated pest management. So both on the invasive plant side and on the mosquito side. Um, and then we also uh converted our uh, we had a seasonal uh technician, uh Jolie Perrier. Uh, we uh brought Jolie into a full-time position uh so that we've uh got the capacity to uh handle both the uh the plants and the mosquito side. Um, so we're going to talk a little bit about the program. Um, I'd also like to recognize Cheryl Fippen, uh, who's uh from BWP Consulting. Uh, she's going to get into some more of the technical aspects. Uh, Cheryl's here today despite the fact she uh just flew back into the country last night on a late flight, uh, so thank you for for joining us. Um, so I think I will uh, I'll turn it over to Colleen now. The one thing I do just want to draw attention to, um, and Colleen's going to flesh it out quite a bit more uh in her uh part of the presentation. But that, uh, you know, the the first word you see up here in terms of this being the nuisance mosquito control program. Um, this isn't a uh, this isn't a public health-driven program, that's not kind of in our our mandate. This is about, um, you know, quality of life and uh kind of looking at the the nuisance aspect of mosquitoes. Um, so with that, I uh will turn it over to Colleen.
Thanks, Kevin. Good morning, everybody. Um, a lot of you know me as the invasive plant person, now moving into mosquitoes. Um, I know a lot about integrated pest management, but not a ton about the biology of mosquitoes. So I'm really relying on our contractors this year to teach me about that, and I'm excited about it. But my first task was uh to provide you guys with an overview of the history of the mosquito control program. And it was a bit of a fun task for me because I got to blow the dust off of the uh archives in the TNRD files and um create a timeline for you of the uh evolution of our mosquito control program. So I'm going to take you on a trip back to the nineteen sixties, when I suspect the mosquito control initiative started taking place in the TNRD. So that'd be the late sixties, early seventies. Um, and then in nineteen seventy, the Mosquito Control Society requested the TNRD to undertake mosquito control for the member municipalities of Valley View, Chase and Kamloops. So I didn't know Valley View was its own municipality at one point. So that was an interesting fact for me. Um, so the residents of areas F, G, J and L, uh, I don't know where electoral areas F and G have disappeared to, or C and D that I'm going to reference, but they went to the polls and voted yes. And with that, we had our first members municipalities join the service. In nineteen seventy-four, like I said, electoral areas C and D were getting itchy, pun intended, uh, to join the service, and a referendum was held with the residents voting yes, and they formally joined. In nineteen eighty-five, the TNR granted the function of mosquito control for electoral areas O and the defined, a defined area of electoral area P, and in nineteen ninety-one, electoral A joined. Um, but when things really start getting interesting, it's in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, when the West Nile virus uh began to outbreak in the United States, so in California. There was concern that the virus was going to move north into southern BC. So the um interior health began a program that provided financial assistance to local governments and First Nations to implement uh programs directed at mosquito control with the intent of reducing the risk of West Nile virus. So initially, the UBCM administered the program, which was titled the Thompson Nicola Regional District West Nile Program. However, in two thousand and eight, the administration was taken over by the TNRD by request of the UBCM. However, in 2008, the administration was taken over by the TNRD by request of the UBCM. Um, and the idea was that the combined funding approach would allow the TNRD to coordinate funding in areas of greatest concern at appropriate times. So at that point in time, all municipalities and First Nations, with the exception of City of Merritt and Cooks Ferry Indian Band, were on board. I'm not certain of the reasons why Merritt and Cooks Ferry were not on board. So I can't answer the question if you guys ask it, um, but they were opposed to it. With the TNRD taking the reins, uh, of the West Nile program, management of mosquitoes expanded from areas that were already in the service to additional areas outside the service areas. And this, um, I really want to hone in on areas around Merritt. So Douglas Lake, Upper Nicola, Lower Nicola, um, they were reaping the benefits of this West Nile program and getting mosquito control in that area. However, in 2012, the government deemed, I should say, the provincial government deemed that West Nile was not actually a threat to BC, at least not to the same degree as other provinces in the country. So the pro- program came to a halt. Um, and with that, the mosquitoes stopped getting managed and people began to notice. So there was a, a bit of a drive from the public, um, in the Merritt area to reestablish, or not reestablish, but establish a mosquito control service. And so in 2015, electoral areas M and M joined the service. So I just wanted to highlight the, the goals of the service. It's really important to be clear, as Kevin said, um, that this is a program not for public health. It's more to improve the quality of life and tourism for, for our region. So the number one goal is reducing mosquito populations to tolerable levels within specified areas in the TNRD. I'm, I'm saying specified, we're not out there treating every area in the tier, TNRD. Um, we don't have capacity for that. And the locations that we do select to treat are based on a few factors such as breeding habitats and other details that Cheryl's going to go into more detail about. And we would love to get rid of all the mosquitoes, but the goal again is to decrease them to reasonable levels. Um, and eradication just simply isn't feasible. So with that, I'll leave you with this take-home message. We just can't kill them all. I know you'd like it, but we just, we can't do it. So to put things in perspective, there are billions of mosquito larvae out there. If we were to reach 99% efficacy of treatment, there would still be millions left. So yes, we'll have ebbs and flows of mosquito seasons. Some years will be worse than others, but if we weren't doing anything, it would be a lot, a lot worse than it is. So just a bit about the service areas. So our services are grouped into service areas. Each electoral area and member municipality are part of the program are within one of the, the areas listed there. In summary, we have five titled North, South, Area M, Area A, and Area N. So, um, I just put which electoral areas and member municipalities are within each on the screen for you. And then we currently have two contractors that administer the services throughout the service areas. And the first being BWP, they've been delivering the program in Area A, uh, North and South since 1999. And the second is Duca Environmental, who's been delivering the program in Area M and M since 2016. Um, and our contractors, like I said, I'm new to mosquitoes, but our contractors and their staff are truly the experts on the topic. And without, you know, they're just a really great wealth of knowledge for this program and, and, uh, controlling mosquitoes in the TNRD. So if you ask me a question, I'll likely pass it off to Cheryl. Um, so I'm going to pass it over to Kevin to just talk a little bit about the program budget.
There we go. Um, so yeah, this is our, and this is the 2023 numbers or was this for this year? Okay, so these are the current numbers. So, yeah, as, uh, Colleen laid out, we have the, uh, the different service areas. So, um, given the, um, you know, geographic, uh, uh, nature of, you know, obviously the, the mosquito growth is not going to adhere to our neat arbitrary administrative boundaries. So, uh, that is why we do have these, uh, in some cases, combined service areas. And the taxation is then, uh, kind of divided up, uh, commensurate with that between the electoral areas, uh, and the municipalities. So, um, this is our, this is our current, uh, breakdown. Um, as you can see, the, the ground total between the, uh, EA's municipalities, um, $581,000, uh, for this year. Yeah. And then Jamie, anything further on the budget side?
I, I guess just one thing to add, the, the historical reason that it's broken up, even though it's continuous, our work that we do from the North Thompson down through the South was a, a way to, I mean, it was, they were, they came into being at different times, but also a way to recognize the, the contributions being more equitable. If it was all lumped into one service area, then by assessment, then the big players like Kamloops end up paying the, the, the large majority of it. Um, so it was broken up into these three different areas, uh, to try and get, uh, more equitable, um, tax contributions from the different participating areas.
Hey, thank you. Um, I was going to play this video. It's just an overview of the mosquito control program, but in lieu of time, I think I'll just skip through it. And it's available on the TNRD website under, um, the mosquito control program. So you guys have interest, you can watch it at that point. But with that said, I'm going to introduce Cheryl Fippen. Um, she's the president of BWP Consulting and she's going to give you guys the mosquito 101 session here. So welcome Cheryl up.
The answer to the merit question is they did do a program, but they didn't join with the TNRD so that they, they didn't opt out. They did their own thing. Right. So I'm Cheryl Fippen. This will be my 26th season operating the mosquito control program here. A lot of it now comes down to instinct and experience. So I'll just start with some basic mosquito 101. I think we have to know the basics of mosquito biology to kind of understand a bit more about what we do. So mosquitoes, we don't learn this in school, but we always learn about butterflies, that they go through their eggs and their larvae and their chrysalis. Well, mosquitoes and actually beetles all have that same life cycle. So it's called complete metamorphosis. So all mosquitoes, they start out, say, we'll start to cycle at adults. They all lay eggs. Um, some species lay their eggs in soil, others lay it on the surface of water. Oh, I hit there. Going the wrong way. Oh, that one. On the surface of water, like these ones are laid. Um, some of them lay their eggs like in tree holes. They all have very specific places they like to lay their eggs. Then they hatch as larvae. All larvae must live in standing water. Doesn't have to be a lot of water. Cattle hoofprints are sometimes great little habitats for mosquito larvae. In the TNRD, we have a number of different genuses of mosquitoes. And if you're experienced at looking at them, you can look in the water and have a good idea, um, of their habit, whether or not they're going to be human biters, just on the morphology of the larvae. We have one interesting one in the TNRD, so kind of up in the top corner there. If you notice, all the larvae kind of have, they're called siphons, sticking out of their butt. So they need to attach the surface of water to breathe. They don't have gills. They can't get oxygen from the water. So they need to attach the surface. That neat guy up in the corner actually has a saw for a siphon and saws into the center of cattails. And then it gets its oxygen from the center of cattails. We know we have them because I trap adults all the time, but I've had a hundred dollar bounty off on getting me a larvae for years and no one's ever been able to find me one. I'd love to put one on a slide. I've seen them in Florida, but I haven't ever been able to find one here. Just tons of adults, so I know they're there. And then they pupate. So the pupil stage of a mosquito is also in water. They look like little commas. They have the, the little horn sticking out of his head. That's where they're breathing. They also need to attach the surface to breathe. When you look over into the water, they'll be hanging out at the surface and then they go, and they kind of dive to the bottom and then they float back up. Uh, when we see those, that's not a good day because they're no longer feeding. And I'll talk a bit more about that. And then they step out on the surface as adults. So one thing I get often when people call is they'll say, oh, no, they're still babies. They're still babies. And I'll be like, okay, like they're in the water? No, 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 they're just really small. They don't grow once they hit this size. So they're just looking at a species of tiny mosquitoes. So they're not babies. Once they're out of the water and they're flying around at that stage, they're all adults. They're not going to grow any bigger. There's just different species and different sizes depending on the species. So some mosquito facts, females require a blood needle to develop their eggs. Males don't bite. So it is true. It's only the females. They have to do the dangerous work of going in, getting the blood to make the eggs. Males are actually considered beneficial insects. They're pollinators of grasses. So I often get, what are they good for anyways? Well, males are actually beneficial. Also, obviously they're good food in their aquatic stages and as their adult stages, all mosquitoes are food. All larvae, like I said before, develop in standing water. I do get a lot of calls, people irate that I don't know what I'm doing because the mosquitoes are in the grass. They're not in the water. They're looking at adults. When the adults emerge, they like a nice, cool place to avoid the sun. So yeah, sometimes if you've had an emergence, you'll walk through the grass and they'll come out of the grass and they're like, nope, that's where they are. That's where they are. What are you doing down there in the water? Those are adults. We don't treat adults. We have about 35 species of mosquitoes in the TNRD. I feel like we have a little bit more than that now. I've identified a couple of new ones, but we have a lot of different species. Different species have different habits. So like I touched on, some of them lay their eggs in different areas. We have a species, um, that likes laying their eggs around alkali ponds. We have a couple of species that like laying their eggs around all the grassland ponds, uh, all the way up to Logan Lake. So they lay their eggs around those ponds. And then we have really aggressive about two or three species that love laying their eggs along the North and South Thompson valleys. Larvae depends on the time of year, depends on the temperature, depends how much food's in the water. Anything from five days in a nice shallow, warm, mucky area where they have lots of food to filter out to four weeks. So right now we've been out looking at some of those grassland ponds. There's still ice in the middle and there's tiny little larvae right along the edges and they're barely moving. So I have no idea even when they hatched. It could have been a month ago, but they are not going to come out of there for quite a while. They're very, very slow. They're hardly eating. But when that ice comes off, if it starts to warm up, they'll develop very quickly. Most of our species in the TNRD, they only bite once. They lay their eggs and they die. So they're quite short-lived unless we have a really cool wet summer where they have lots of place to hide out and avoid the sun, they'll continue to live a lot longer. But if it's hot and dry, they actually live quite a short amount of time, the majority of our species. We have, so the females, I think you're kind of getting the idea now that they all kind of have their own little habitats. So we actually have, they're quite specific about who they're willing to bite. So we have a couple of species that only bite birds. We have obviously ones that like humans and other mammals. We have ones that really like large animals, so horses, moose, deer. And they'll come around their first thing in the spring. I always get a couple of calls really early, the first kind of days we want to be outside. And they're really big and these mosquitoes will come around and hover around you for a real long time. Those ones are actually are kind of big animal biters and they really wish you were a horse. But if you really won't walk away, they might bite you. And we actually have a species that only bites frogs. They're selective about where they lay their eggs. Like I touched on, we have one, a real two, actually, two extremely aggressive species that love alkali ponds. We have some that love like polluted man-made habitats like ditches. We have ones that lay their eggs in containers, some that like receding floodwaters, tree holes, very specific habitats. Um, some are more prevalent in urban areas and are more prevalent in rural areas. We, well, often if I get a weird outbreak, right? Someone calls and they said they have lots of mosquitoes and I go out there and they're actually mosquitoes. Sometimes they're not. We'll set a trap and then I will identify what they are. And then once I know what species they are, I can kind of have a good idea of what habitat they came from. So the components of the program. Surveillance. So surveillance comes in a lot of forms. Um, we look at, there's a huge environmental surveillance component to our program. Weather, including the temperature, what's coming, what's the precipitation going to be like? If we're going to have a hot spell, obviously the waters are going to rise quite quickly. Are we going to have a hot spell and then it's going to rain on Sunday? Well, we don't want to plan our helicopter day for a rainy day or it just gums up our product, makes it look like oatmeal. So we do a lot of looking at the weather every single day. We also look at the snowpack and you guys are probably well-versed in what's happening with the snowpack this year. Uh, it's low. All this means to me is that if it comes down quickly, if we get hot in the spring, we might end our season early. It's really not telling me how high the water's going to go. It's not telling me what our season's going to look like yet because we don't know how the water will come down and how it's going to affect the rivers. Uh, here's the snowpack in the South Thompson. Same thing, you can, the bottom line is the line for in both cases. So record lows, uh, snowpack in both Celesta at 1500 meters and Park Mountain around 1900 meters. And the other thing we look at is river levels. So online, every hour it's updated, the North Thompson River Levels at McClure. I've been known to get up at two o'clock in the morning just to see where it is. So the water starts to rise. Just through experience and having done this so, so many times, uh, I know that our habitats are hard to fill in at around 3.1 meters, 1,200 meters cube per second at McClure. So as soon as I see that, I know the water's starting to run into all of our sites and as it gets higher, the sites get bigger. So then we watch the weather, make predictions of how high that water's going to go. And then once it peaks and starts going back down, all the habitat that's been made from the rising water starts to get smaller and all the larvae that are in there are going to get more condensed and they're growing. So we have to decide when to pull the trigger to do a helicopter campaign with those guys. So if it's, we actually got really lucky last year. Well, I think it's science, but we got really nice, we got the helicopter out in the trough. We knew we couldn't wait any longer. The larvae that had become wet, if you look at around 1,200, that was around May 4th. So around the 15th, we had to do helicopters about 10 days later. So we couldn't wait for the river to go up again before we treated or the larvae that were in the pond were going to pupate. And then they, they don't have, um, we can't treat them. So then, of course, the water went up again, super high, really high actually, from what we were expecting with a low snowpack. And then the tap shut off. All of a sudden the snow was gone and it just went away really quickly. So although we had quite a high peak, which made a lot of habitat for us, uh, it was about two hours, two weeks earlier than normal and then all the snow was gone. So I guess I should clarify, as water starts to come up, so our fights, our sites start to fill in at about, like I say, 3.1 meters. And you can see the water kind of creeping into the sites when you're standing out there. And we'll say start in Kamloops and start checking all the way up the North Thompson. By the time we come back down, say two or three hours later, there's already larvae. They are just, they hatch within a couple of hours. It's incredible. So as soon as they get wet and it can absolutely get loaded with larvae. So we use our super high-tech sampling tool. Looks like a yogurt cup on the end of a stick. We order them out of California. They're really expensive. They're about 300 mils and we scoop the water and count how many larvae are in there. Our trigger for treatment is approximately three larvae in a dip. If, um, we do have the choice though of treating if there's less or waiting if we think it's going to mean if it's a ditch, if it's a tiny little pond, I don't care if I'm getting five larvae, like it's not going to make a difference. Uh, the picture on the left here was this week. So we had staff out in Nuttsford just checking to see where things were. Cause we did have some nice warm days. And that's where I'm talking about. You can see ice in the middle of the pond, but they were getting little tiny larvae around the outside. So we're pretty confident. We don't, we're going to have another couple of weeks before things get really exciting up there. The other kind of surveillance we do is adult surveillance. So this starts near the end of May. We have 10 different, um, trapping sites that we use every single year. We've been using the same site or close to the same site now for 25 years. And then we can compare year to year, the, the species that come, that we trap out of that site and the abundance. And what the idea is, if there was tons and tons of water, yes, we're going to expect to see more larvae. Are we still seeing a reasonable number of lar- of adults, sorry, that have come out based on the, the type of year that we've had? So I have big collections of mosquitoes glued to pins, just as reference collections. Uh, and typically though, we only see a couple of those species in huge abundance. Larval control. So in the TNRD, uh, the area that I do, so not M and N, there's about 450. So in the T N R D, the area that I do, so not M and N, there's about four hundred and fifty sites that we have mapped. We have them all on K M Z files and all of my staff run around with iPads that have cellular programs on them so that they can just drive right to the sites. Each site, we have landowner information, we have past sampling data, past treatment data, the dogs' names, whatever we find to be important. We have photographs of the sites. And then our staff can look at, oh, look at, okay, the site next to Duffrenn comes active usually quite quickly. Now, now that they've made those big ponds up there in the last eight years or nine years, I've kind of lost track. There's actually only one little corner of that pond that gets larvae, so it's kind of changed that whole landscape for us. But anyway, every single site has a page like this in our mosquito headquarters database and our staff can access that twenty-four seven. So with the combination of environmental monitoring, so the weather and the river levels, my twenty years of experience, knowing where things are gonna be active, when they're gonna be active, we can predict where the larvae are, when they're gonna be there and when it's time to treat them. Of course, we're ground truthing that continuously, we're driving up and down the rivers, we're driving around in the grasslands, we're dipping, we don't kill, we never apply larvicide unless we've confirmed that the larvae are there and at the right stage. And then it's time to treat them. So how do we treat them? The grassland ponds are primarily treated by ground, so we put on those backpacks, they look like leaf blowers. We put the product in the back and waiters on and just walk out into the pond and treat. Some areas we can access by U T V, makes it a little bit easier. We also use our backpacks when the river is just starting to come up, if we want to kind of get a handle on some larvae that are getting away or after the helicopters come through, if they've missed little corners, we do, we call it mop up and we go back to all the sites that were hit by helicopter and make sure that all the corners of it were, were controlled. So after, we keep trying to get them by ground as the water rises, obviously the habitat's huge. And then we pull the trigger and we do helicopter because we can't get it all by ground or we can't get it in time before they pupate. And so we have a helicopter, it's got a big basket underneath it. Our job is to know where the larvae are, communicate it to the pilot and then she goes out and treats. We've been really lucky, we've had the same pilot probably about fifteen years now. She literally knows every single site, she knows the landowner's name, she knows that it's gonna be active. She's often calling us, hey, when we were going up, you didn't show me that site in behind the barn, it's, it's full of water, do you want to check it? And so we'll send someone off flying over to check it, yeah, larvae are there, get it Katie. And it's a really good, easy program. We've had, we like to show you guys these buckets because we do get some people that think we're doing crazy things. We got a call one day, for example, in a panic because someone thought we were sucking all the water at a stump lake. I don't, we're just not even there. The product's a biological control, so it's a bacteria, it's a naturally occurring soil organism. It has a short action, so when we put it in the water, it only works for about twenty-four hours. That's why we have to reapply. It's attached to corn cob, so the corn cob's a safe carrier, right? Just degrades. The active ingredient, the Bacillus thuringensis is Valensis, is certified for organic gardening. However, the corn cob is not because we can't, even though it's just ground up corn cob, it could be genetically modified. So the actual product itself is not certified for organic gardening, just the active ingredient is. So you could eat this for breakfast, if you yanked a carrot out of your garden, you'd probably get some of this bacteria. I mean, I wouldn't recommend it, not in that corn cob, it's kind of smelly, but it is safe. Other insects are unaffected by it, amphibians, fish, mammals, whatever, it's totally safe. We do not have an adult mosquito control program in the T N R D, we used to. If you look at the timeline that Colleen was talking about earlier, when they first started out, they were just flying planes over, fogging. When I took over in nineteen ninety-nine, the larvociding component, the component we do now is a lot smaller and they basically every summer went out with trucks and fogged different areas. So over time, we, we just don't need that anymore. Like my helicopter budget when I started was twelve hours, now we're sometimes use up to forty hours. They put out a fraction of the amount of larvicide that we do now. We just put the effort in finding the sites and making sure that they're treated, so we don't as often need the adult control. The larval, the larval control is obviously a lot more effective when it's done properly because, I mean, the larvae can't get away from us. The adult control means that we're driving our trucks around. If there's, mosquitoes are hiding behind a house, they're not gonna get killed. If we go at the wrong time of day, they're not gonna get killed. So my experience with it is I would come spray all night long and then get screamed at all day that I obviously never came to their place. It's like, well, we just treated this little speck in the mosquito universe, of course, they're gonna be back the next day. So now our energy goes to killing the larvae. Outlook for twenty twenty-four. So, so far we know the snowpack is really low, water has started to slowly come down, the rivers are just barely starting to rise. The snowmelt pools, so the people that were out this week, they said there's pools that are, we have one guy's been with us for five years. He said a lot of pools don't even exist, they're not wet yet or probably most likely will not become wet. And most of them are a lot smaller than we've seen in the past. But the weather will still come into play. If it gets hot and all the snow comes down at once, or if we get Armageddon rains for four days, then everything can go nice and high. And all it has to do is touch all those larvae as the water rises and they emerge. So it doesn't matter if it's just a very short amount of time that they get wet, they'll all get kind of pushed into those habitats. So we'll just have to wait and see how high the rivers go. Questions?
You wouldn't have, have any, thank you very much. The, the animated one of the mosquito filling up with blood was very interesting. Thank you. Director Sal.
Thank you, Madam Chair, more of a comment. So when I first moved to the Clearwater area in two thousand nineteen, I remember social media back then. There were lots of people wondering why there were choppers and such, and then some of the horse owners, that's, I'm pretty sure, you know, after twenty years, that's probably one of the, the only people who might have concern about choppers and such. But I, I noticed that in the last couple of years, like the, the communication to the communities that, hey, you know, you know, a few days or weeks in advance to let us know that it's, we're doing a flyover, so keep your horses indoors or, or sorry, not indoors.
Or we can tell them the season's starting. So a lot of times we, like we're pulling the trigger on helicopter twenty-four hours ahead of time, two days ahead, that's all we know, right? What the weather's doing, has the river peaked, is it gonna go down, is it gonna start going up, what stage are the larvae at? So we really do have a short window, but it's that science on Facebook that's always fun for us. Like we'll usually have the Clearwater Facebook page open, just reading all the great comments, the people that all know what we're up to. And it's like, what? No. So we'll stick in there, it's actually larvicide, no, it's not destroying the trees, no, we're putting, not putting out fire retardant, no, we're not sucking water out of the river, right? Whatever the comments may be. But horses, some horses just stand and gaze at you and some try to commit suicide. We know with most of those horses now, especially Katie, she's well aware of the horses that don't like us, so she tries to avoid them. Yeah.
Thank you. When we moved here, my husband's from England and he wondered why our house had screens on every window. Having lived all his life in the UK, after his first spring and summer here, he understood why every window had a screen.
Yeah. So. Well, that's a time, over the last, I'd say, ten years, we've had a lot of turnover at the North Thompson. People that, you know, had raised their families there for thirty years now have moved on and we're getting new people that come and they purchase in September, October, when the river's gentle and it's a little coarse and there's not a mosquito to be found anywhere. And then the next year, they're absolutely horrified to say, it's the worst I've ever seen. I'm like, oh, it's just starting, like that river is gonna come into your field. It isn't, there's no way it is. I'm like, oh, it is every year. But you still don't have to disclose that.
Director Smith.
Thank you, Chair. I'm in Area I, uh, E, sorry. Where am I today, Area E? And I understand that at one time we were in the program and now we are not, so.
What is Area E? Can you?
The Bonfire Plateau, Seventy Mile House.
Oh, so you guys were included under the West Nile Virus Initiative. So there hasn't ever been a nuisance mosquito control program created there, like we have established in these areas that Colleen was talking about. But when there was West Nile virus funding, it did span the entire T N R D, other than the City of Merit, which did their own thing. So yeah, we were there.
So, so how do we get involved again? Or, or do we?
Yes, so through the chair, that is the process that we went through in now twenty fifteen, I think it was for Area M and N, when it was quickly became evident to the residents that all of a sudden there was no quote-unquote free mosquito control that was being funded through the problems for West Nile and that the nuisance was, was major. So we went through a service establishment process there. So previous boards, it hasn't been an appetite to expand service into the, the Western T N R D corridor, but that could happen through a service establishment process.
Thank you, Director Stamer.
Thanks, Madam Chair, I'll keep it quick. I remember the old days when you'd hear the buzzing around in the, in the, in the airs above you and you thought it was five o'clock Charlie. And the mosquito populations were considerably higher in the North Thompson Valley than they are now. So thanks very much for all the good work because it's much better than it used to be.
Yes. Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? No? Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much and continue to fight the good fight.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that brings us to the end of this morning's agenda, just one minute over time. So thank you very much, everyone, and we'll see you all back here in beautiful Kamloops in two weeks for Silga. We're adjourned.